Now five, it is now five thirty-three and I wanted to start our special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Allison, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Candell.
I'm here.
Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Thank you. And we will be having a regular meeting in thirty minutes at six o'clock and same roll call and pledge of allegiance. But if, you know, considering why we're here, maybe we can all say the pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you. So our, our, um, item of business here is the proclamation recognizing City Hall's one hundred and tenth anniversary. So, uh, we have a proclamation and we have some candles and some things to go through. So I believe, uh, Joan, if you wanted to come up and say a few things and, uh, kind of take it.
Well, first, first of all, thank you, City Council, for, for the proclamation itself. And, uh, I'm Joan Lundstrom, president of the Larkspur Community Foundation, along with Hillary Colhane from our Larkspur Heritage Preservation Board and Dick Cunningham, ex-council member, and one of the authors of our history, Larkspur Past and Present. And in, in the history book, in this one, there's, there are three versions. This is, this is the, uh, an earlier version. There are some later versions on the table there. But here's a picture of the city dedicating this business, this business, this structure in April thirtieth, nineteen thirteen, and they're all sitting on benches in the front lawn for, for the dedication with bunting. We don't have bunting, but we do have cupcakes tonight. And, uh, with, uh, with, after the mayor's reading of the proclamation, we have birthday cupcakes for everyone and would like everyone, after the proclamation, to join us, whatever our voices are, singing Happy Birthday City Hall. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Hillary Cunningham, uh, Colhane. I knew I'd do that. Uh, Hillary Colhane from the Larkspur Heritage Preservation Board.
Thanks, Joan. Hi, everyone. Thank you for making the time for this very special proclamation and dedication. And, um, I just would like to say a couple of words. Do you remember the first time you arrived in Larkspur? I do. Coming south or coming from south of the city, as you come over the sort of knoll here and you look out and you see the town and to the right is this building. It's the first building, the first big building that you see. It's the gateway to our town. Sitting on its promontory overlooking the fire station, St. Patrick's Church, and all of the shops and businesses that make up Larkspur, this building serves as a welcoming, dignified sentinel at the heart of our community. As Tina MacArthur said last month before the historic vote to retain City Hall in this location, this building and the Lark Movie Theater are the two bookends to downtown Larkspur. From the day its doors opened, this building has always provided a service to the Larkspur community. Just below us, where the library drops to the lower stacks, was the original fire station in Larkspur. Its fire truck bay doors located where the opening to the children's library is now. The library staff office contains the original municipal vault. It's a big vault. Best of all, in the early days, there was a jail holding cell located roughly where the elevator is today. Upstairs here, the assembly rooms were the original community center. Meetings were held here. The Larkspur Women's Improvement Club provided funds to build a stage and a curtain. The walls were wired to provide electricity for the new-fangled thing called a movie projector. Some longtime Larkspurians can still remember coming to this room to watch movies. Even the exterior City Hall provides a gathering space for our local community. How many of you have stopped to have a drink at the fountain outside or walked up the steps to read the public postings or sat on the lawn under the shade of the redwood tree to watch the Fourth of July parade? Over its one hundred and ten-year life, this building has truly become a living monument to the thing we cherish most, open access to civic decision-making. Inside this building, you can meet with your representatives and advocate, organize, learn, and of course, share your voice in the public discourse. Any citizen can walk into this building and conduct their business. These walls, if they could talk, would tell the story of a century of public debate and the shaping of Larkspur. This open space is here to sustain people gathering and lingering, and best of all, it belongs to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Good evening, and I'm Richard Cunningham. On today's date, exactly one hundred and ten years ago, this building was under active construction. It had already been framed out. The roof and windows were being installed. The very capable Charles Clausen, who was also the building's architect, personally supervised the construction work. At age twenty-six, he was one of the Bay Area's emerging new talents who went on to design more than five hundred structures during his career. Many of his beautiful buildings still stand in San Francisco and the East Bay. He designed this one as an adaptation of the popular Mission Revival style, well-suited to the needs of our young town. But it's very clear that City Hall would not have been built were it not for a stunning political event two years before. In October nineteen eleven, the citizens of California amended our constitution to allow women to vote. Joan Lund, Joan behind me was the first elected member of our city council, the first elected female member. It took a while for things to get in place. After that election, within months, women had registered and had become more than forty percent of the local electorate. And then graciously and courteously, the ladies made it very clear they were going to bring a new outlook to Larkspur's politics. The established political powers of our town had refused to consider financing a new building. But within a year's time, that retransched position was completely reversed. At a bond election in August of nineteen twelve, Larkspur's citizens voted overwhelmingly for a new City Hall and paved streets. Thus, our new City Hall came into being at the same time that Magnolia Avenue was altered from a dirt road to a newly paved state highway, done specifically to accommodate newly developed motor cars. The lesson? This building was created because of two unstoppable forces, the female vote and the advent of automobiles. The final result was celebrated at a citywide party called a jolification, where our citizens celebrated their new modern building sit on a lovely hill overlooking the state highway. For the people of Larkspur, this structure symbolized that our town and its forward-looking populace had succeeded in establishing their new identity and their bright future. I did that in two and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you, Joan, Hillary, Richard. So I believe I'll go ahead and read the proclamation of the City Council of the City of Larkspur recognizing City Hall's one hundred and tenth anniversary. Whereas the City of Larkspur Incorporated in nineteen oh eight began to discuss building a City Hall that would represent the growing importance of the community and its emergent, emerging sense of cohesion. Whereas at a municipal election in August of twenty, uh, twenty, August of nineteen twelve, the citizens of Larkspur voted overwhelmingly to issue bonds to finance the purchase of land and construction of architect-designed municipal offices, housing legislative, fire, library services, and a meeting and social hall upstairs. And whereas Larkspur officials immediately endeavored to design and furnish an attractive and well-built structure and were acknowledged for these efforts by a grateful citizenry. Whereas one hundred and ten years ago, the resulting structure was dedicated formally in April and open for use in July of nineteen thirteen. And whereas the Larkspur City Hall continues to serve as a significant contributing feature to Larkspur's historic district as recognized in nineteen eighty-two by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, now therefore be it resolved that I, Gabe Paulson, mayor of the City of Larkspur, declare that the City Council celebrates the one hundred and tenth anniversary of the continuing contributions that our City Hall has provided to the City of Larkspur. All right. And I believe we, we were gonna try to sing happy.
And we have sugar for the council and cupcakes for, for all back here. And if, I think we have a little time, if we may, to all join singing Happy Birthday City Hall. Are you ready?
All right.
Okay. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, City Hall. Happy birthday to you. Thank you.
All right, so we'll adjourn to cupcakes and socializing and reconvene here in about fifteen minutes for the six o'clock meeting. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. It's six o'clock and, uh, May third. Allison, could we please get a roll call?
Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Hara.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Candell.
I'm here.
Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and let's do our pledge of allegiance. So rise as you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, and I just want to remind people that we have a pretty long meeting tonight. We have, of course, the, uh, public hearing, item seven point one, and then we go into the budget, uh, which is items, uh, eight point one. Well, amending a fee schedule, looking at the budget eight point two, pointing Larkspur Citizen of the Year. So let's pace ourselves. Um, and it was nice to start off at five thirty. We celebrate the one hundred and tenth birthday of this building. And two, two comments I want to make. One is it's good to be in a building where some pretty controversial things have been debated and there's a lot of precedence and we're, uh, we're nice people, I think. And there's also cupcakes in the back. So if you're feeling drowsy, just, just, you know, go for the sugar. With that being said, we'll move to public comment, which is item number two, and this is for matters not listed on the agenda. So if anybody here has any public, public comment, please step to the mic and let us know your name and where you live.
I'm Vicki Young, three via La Brea, Larkspur. And I'd like to address the, uh, ongoing parking and speeding problems in the Larkspur Marina. These issues pertain to Redwood High School overflow student parking in my neighborhood, resulting in illegal parking, speeding, and garbage left behind. We have been working with the Redwood Administration and Central Marin Police Department to curtail these problems. Both entities have been helpful, but there is currently a city ordinance prohibiting the police from ticketing illegally parked vehicles without issuing a warning first. This ordinance needs to be removed. The time for a warning is over and the students have taken advantage of this situation. We need to enable the police to issue tickets on an as-needed basis whenever they are available patrol in the Larkspur Marina. I urge you to please remove this unnecessary ordinance. Currently, we have resident-only parking in the designated areas in the Larkspur Marina. Residents apply to the City of Larkspur for a yellow-numbered parking tag that is issued to residents that provide vehicle registration, make, model, and license number. Each vehicle has a specifically issued yellow tag. This one is from a car I sold, so I could give it to somebody and they can use it, but that wouldn't be right. Currently, the City of Larkspur does not share the registration tag vehicle registration information with the Central Marin Police Department. The police need to have access to this information to determine if a vehicle is fraudulently parked in the parking program. I look forward to the City Council's assistance in resolving these problems that greatly impact the safety of the Larkspur Marina residents as well as Redwood High School students. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you for your comment. Yeah, thank you, Vicki. All right. Thanks so much. Um, anybody else here in the chamber want to make public comment? Please.
Hi, I'm Ariana Johar, also resident, uh, in Larkspur Marina, ninety-eight via La Brea, Larkspur. On a subject matter, a separate matter, good evening, Mayor Paulson, Vice Mayor Candell, and esteemed members of the City Council. Um, thank you for your time tonight. Um, I'm a local business owner, resident of Larkspur since twenty seventeen and mother of three young children. I'm here to urge you to adopt a proclamation to identify June second as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Larkspur and join several other neighboring cities and school boards in taking a stand against gun violence. Gun violence is the leading cause of death for children in America. And this is staggering and heartbreaking statistic that cannot be ignored. This is a public health crisis, and as a member of this community, I am deeply concerned about the safety of our children and the well-being of our community. I'd also like to emphasize that mental health continues to be a concern in Marin County. As an editorial published in the Marin Independent Journal on April fifteenth stated, adolescents in our county and across America are experiencing, experiencing a mental health crisis. It is important to recognize the link between mental health and gun violence and to take a comprehensive approach to addressing this issue. Respectfully, emails from fellow residents to your office have gone unanswered on this topic, and I hope that this will not fall flat. I'll be submitting a copy of the editorial and the proclamation template to the City Council for your reference, in addition to an email I sent you earlier this afternoon. I thank you for your attention, and I hope that you'll consider adopting the proclamation to declare June second as Gun Violence Awareness Day in Larkspur. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a quick question? Why June second? Is there, other cities have chosen that? Is it a national day?
It's a national, it's a national day.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ariana. Okay, anybody else in the chamber want to make public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll come back for one last round. Um, Allison, is there anyone in the queue on Zoom?
Zoom audience members? There's no public comment.
Okay, great. Uh, last call, anybody here? Okay, so let's close that and, um, move on to item number three, which are presentations. We have two. Today, um, three point one is Larkspur's twenty twenty annual greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Uh, and then after that, the Marin County-wide electric vehicle acceleration strategy. So, uh, can we see the presentations, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Christina Vork, and I am the Sustainability Coordinator for the Marine Climate and Energy Partnership. And the first presentation I have for you is coming right up. Let me start this as... There we go. Okay, so this evening I am presenting the twenty twenty greenhouse gas emissions inventory report. This is for community-wide emissions, and we are currently working on the twenty twenty-one reports. I'll have that ready for you in just a couple of months. There is a lag in between the time we get this data and we can provide, provide the reports for you. But this is the most recent data that we have available. As I said, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the Marine Climate and Energy Partnership, that of which Larkspur is a member. We've been, um, working since two thousand and seven. We're a partnership of all the Marin jurisdictions plus some of our special districts, like the Transportation Authority Marin, Marin Water, and MCE. And we're working together to implement mutual climate action plan programs, and we also update climate action plans. And one of the big things that we do is we complete these annual community greenhouse gas emissions inventories every year. And we also do municipal inventories every five years. So we're actually due for one of those inventories, and we'll be working on that this year as well. So our inventory is an activity-based inventory, and I just want to draw the distinction between that and consumption-based. Because consumption-based, you're looking at all of the emissions that are generated from all of the products that we use and purchase. So you're looking at upstream emissions, embedded emissions, emissions that come from mining, growing, producing, packaging, shipping goods from other parts of the country or the world to here in Larkspur. Where we, um, do not do consumption-based emissions. We're just looking at those emissions that are created by the activities that are occurring in Larkspur. So activity-based are sixteen metric tons per household. They were in twenty thirteen. And in twenty twenty, there's, it's down to twelve metric tons. If we compare that to a consumption-based inventory, and these are, was the last done for the Bay Area jurisdictions back in twenty thirteen. So that was fifty metric tons for a household back in twenty thirteen. So you can see that there, we're really just looking at a subset of all emissions. But we do this because these are emissions that we have the data that we need to quantify them and that we can kind of reliably quantify them, um, every year so we can look at trends. These are emissions by source for twenty twenty. Um, right away, you'll see that more than half, sixty-one percent of emissions come from transportation. And then the next largest sector is natural gas that's used in the built environment, in Larkspur homes, and in commercial buildings. The built environment electricity sector is just six percent. It used to be much larger, but it's shrunk over time. And then these other sectors are smaller sections of the emissions, waste, water, wastewater, and off-road emissions. So I'm just going to highlight some of these major sectors for you. First, this is a look at emissions. Over time, we have been doing these inventories since two thousand and five. And then we estimate nineteen ninety levels is fifteen percent below two thousand and five levels. So emissions at this point in time are, or at least I should say in twenty twenty, were twenty-nine percent below the two thousand and five level. You may recall that our original goals, when we first started doing climate action plans, was to be at fifteen percent below two thousand and five levels by twenty twenty. So Larkspur has far exceeded that original goal. So looking at the, um, the first, the largest sector, which is transportation, again, it's sixty-one percent of community emissions. Of that, most of those emissions are coming from passenger vehicles. Eighty-one percent of emissions come from passenger vehicles in Larkspur. And when I talk about, um, that they're coming in Larkspur, I'm talking about trips that either start or end in Larkspur, or trips that start and end in Larkspur. I'm not count, we're not counting pass-through, um, vehicle trips. So vehicle miles traveled is actually up eleven percent since two thousand and five, but emissions are down ten percent. And that is because we have had, um, great improvements in fuel efficiency in our internal combustion engine vehicles, as well as, um, an increasingly larger share of alternatively fueled cars like electric vehicles. So here we see that the big opportunity is to continue to reduce emissions through greater adoption of electric vehicles, as well as greater use of alternative transportation like walking, bicycling, and taking transit. The next sector that I wanted to highlight was natural gas. And again, this was the, the, um, second largest at twenty-eight percent of community emissions. Natural gas use is actually down ten percent since two thousand and five. This is due for a variety of reasons, but one of the biggest ones is just the variability of weather. So as it gets colder, we use more natural gas and particularly in our homes. But there is also, some of this is due to just increasingly energy efficiency and conservation. And now, and as we go in future years, um, with the big push to electrify our homes, we'll, we'll be swapping out a lot of that natural gas consumption and, um, using clean electricity instead. So, um, yes, and here the opportunity really is to continue to improve energy efficiency of buildings, but also to convert our natural gas appliances, especially, um, hot water heaters and heating systems, and convert those to ones that use electricity and heat pumps. In the electricity sector, I mean, purchase electricity use is actually down twenty-one percent since two thousand and five for a couple of reasons. One is solar installation. So people are installing more solars, continue to do that on their homes, and that, um, and that shifts that energy production at home rather than being purchased. And also, energy efficiency and conservation is driving consumption to go lower. The emissions are actually much lower. They're seventy-eight percent lower. And that's that red line there that you see on the graph. So the blue bars are the consumption. And that is just due to the fact that our electricity continues to get cleaner and our electricity providers are using more and more renewable energy sources in their electricity mix. So here, the big opportunity is to, again, convert our vehicles to, and our natural gas appliances and systems to those that use this clean electricity rather than natural gas and gasoline. And then in the waste sector, this is a smaller sector, just four percent of community emissions come from waste disposal. Waste disposal, um, is, is, has been trending down the past few years, and it's now at sixteen percent below the two thousand and five levels. And that red line again is showing you the emissions. Waste emissions are actually down thirty-two percent since what they were in two thousand and five. And that is because we are use, depositing less organic content into the landfills. So that is where the emissions are generated, from the decomposition of organic material into methane in the landfills, and that is, um, and that is going down because we're actually composting more and more of that organic material. So here we have an opportunity to continue to reduce emissions through composting of organic waste, also just waste reduction and throwing fewer things into the landfill. And then finally, the last sector I wanted to highlight was water. Very small sector, but, um, actually a really good story because water, um, water use has declined, and it's nineteen percent below two thousand and five. This is a Marin water and district-wide number. But the emissions are down ninety-six percent, and that's because our water agencies, Marin Waters, as well as Sonoma Water Agency uses renewable energy in their electricity, for their electricity. So the emissions that they, that they generate from treating and pumping and distributing water is actually, um, quite minimal. Despite that, there really is a need and opportunity to continue to reduce water use in order to adapt to future droughts that we know are coming because of climate change. So that is a quick look at your twenty So that is a quick look at your 2020 inventory. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from the council? Yes, please, Councilmember Carol.
Couple of things. Well, I mean, though all of these numbers are really pre-COVID. And so we should be seeing some rather dramatic, I would think, changes, particularly traffic in the first year of the COVID and I guess we'll just have to wait and see on that. But one thing I did want to bring up is we do have one industrial plant in town, and that's the Rich Ready Mix Concrete Plant. And I was wondering, I noticed in some of the charts, there were listings that information was not available. What up? I don't see a page number on it, but it was in the the appendix A2. And I think there are some of the numbers that are here that are marked not estimated. There might actually be reports with the Environmental Protection Agency or with Bay Area Air Quality District regarding measurements of the rich concrete plant. Have they been included in this report?
So I don't know what's available with the air district, but there is a threshold where they do quantify the emissions that come from industrial processes. If that plant now, because of the privacy rules, it's called a 1515 rule at PG&E. If the plant is larger, that uses at least 15% of the overall natural gas and used in the community or electricity, it will be excluded. And I have no way of actually knowing if that plant has been excluded or not. So what we're looking at is a trend. So if it was excluded in the beginning and it's still excluded from the data that we get from PG&E, at least we're looking at the trend for the rest of the the rest of the facilities or buildings that are using natural gas and electricity. So and to kind of short answer is that I don't know if that if that plant has been included or not because of the privacy laws.
Okay.
But they don't, they don't give me that kind of data on, you know, on an individual basis.
Okay, but could you find that out and let us know?
Well, again, because it's a privacy matter, they PG&E is not going to share individual, any kind of data for an individual, any one, one facility or one business. So I can't, I can't actually get that number.
Okay, but it sounded like you said there's a threshold at which point.
Well, oh, okay, so.
So if you could just, if you they meet that threshold or don't meet that threshold, that's an answer I can take back to the people who are complaining about it.
Sure. No, okay, yes, I can, I can check with the air district to see if they have information on that. Yes, and I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions? Okay, I had one brief question. I again appreciate, you know, getting some of the numbers here. And, you know, we've seen it through various presenters and our, you know, climate action, you know, discussions. Are there, you know, or is this part of your scope or another agency that kind of has projections on what some of our policies might do, like the 50 and 16 metric ton number? You know, if in fact, you know, we electrify for new construction, or if we electrify for both new and commercial. That may have been presented, but I'm wondering if that's something that you you handle as well.
Yeah, that is something that we do when we do climate action plan updates. We make projections about the impact on greenhouse gas reductions that every particular program will have. If there are any questions as, you know, as you're looking at new programs and you want to quantify the the emissions reductions, I can, I'm certainly available through the Marine Climate and Energy Partnership to work with staff to come up with those numbers. There are various tools. There's a tool at the state level that helps to quantify emissions from like adopting an all-electric ordinance, for example. I have done that kind of work when jurisdictions are looking at adopting a ban on landscape, gas-powered landscape equipment. So we can, we can quantify that using the available data that we have.
Okay, and one last question. Does, you know, any of the work you do not Larkspur specific also look at wildfire? You know, because I I know that the, you know, 2017 fires kind of wiped out 10 years of savings and, you know, so controlled burns that we do do and can control as a policy matter, and also uncontrolled burns. I'm wondering if that enters any of these calculations or analysis.
Yeah, that does not enter the the analysis. We don't look at, we're not looking at emissions, you know, carbon dioxide that's sequestered in the environment or that's lost through wildfire.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, if not, then thank you so much for your time and the presentation. And yeah, I'm sorry, anybody in the audience or on Zoom, any questions? Yeah. David.
Well, I'm David Mahler. Good evening, Mayor Paulson, Councilmember Staff. I live here in Larkspur. And first of all, I want to say I'm really glad to see this report. It's a really important report because it it's really the measurements of so much other work that the council and staff is trying to do around climate change. And as we all know, what doesn't get measured doesn't get done. So here are the measurements. I have a couple of comments I wanted to make. First of all, the report clearly identifies that the use of fossil fuels for transportations and natural gas in buildings are responsible for most of the greenhouse gas emissions here in Larkspur, 89% if you put the numbers together. And it really reinforces the importance of Larkspur proceeding to adopt the Green Building and EV Charter Reach Code that we discussed last week's public workshop, which will reduce emissions from these exact two sources, transportation and buildings. Secondly, I want to emphasize one of the charts that Christine took us through, and that was the one that shows natural gas has used to stayed about the same for the last 15 years. But on the electricity end, the carbon content of that electricity has radically dropped. And it's that's the reason to shift from natural gas to electricity is because the carbon content of that shift has a dramatic cut on our greenhouse gas emissions. The last point I wanted to comment on, Christine commented on right at the beginning of her presentation. And that is the lag between acquisition of this data and the report out of the results. Two and a half years is too much. We need a little shorter lag there to be able to see the consequences of decisions that this council and staff are making. And I think Christine addressed that very, very appropriately. And the last thing I want to touch on, Councilmember Carol's comment about this being 2020 pre-COVID. Actually, the shutdown of COVID was started March 2020. So this is somewhat reflective of that, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other comments in the chamber? Yep, please, approach the mic. Yeah, to the clerk, please. If you could go to the mic and tell us your name and. Oh, sorry. Is this, is this about the climate action discussion? Okay, then then let's hold off. We're not at the public hearing yet. That's coming.
Okay, this is, this has to do with something that she just wants posted, one one neighbor regarding the.
Okay, let's get to that later if it's if it's not this particular item, which is the annual greenhouse gas emissions. You can give it to the clerk. That's fine. Okay. Thank you. So any other comments on the annual greenhouse gas emissions inventory in the chamber before we go out to Zoom? Okay, Allison, anybody in the queue?
Any raised hands from our Zoom audience members? There's no public comment.
Okay, great. So then let's move on to item 3.2. Were there any other last comments here from the council? No. So 3.2 Marin Countywide Electric Vehicle Acceleration Strategy. If we could get that presentation.
Okay, and I'm back.
You have more time than that.
All right. Let me start this presentation. Okay, so. So now I'll be presenting on the Marin Countywide EV Acceleration Strategy. This is another project that we have been working on at the Marine Climate and Energy Partnership. And we've been working on this. It's been well over a year. This project's been funded through the Transportation Authority of Marin, their alternative fuel program. And when we set out to do this project, we had the goal to, first of all, our goal, overall goal is to accelerate EV adoption and meet those targets that are set in each jurisdiction's climate action plan, and they vary from one to another. And the intent is to develop this plan or what we call an acceleration strategy that can be accepted and adopted and acted on by all of the jurisdictions. So this will help us to all kind of work together and prioritize what needs to be done in this space. So for our process, we had a subcommittee that was formed, and we developed some guiding principles, which we'll look at on the next slide. We conducted a lot of outreach to jurisdiction staff, including public work staff, because they kind of bear a lot of the brunt of implementing this, at least with public fleets and doing public chargers. And we also interviewed and spoke with community leaders, other nonprofits, state agencies. And we really wanted to understand what are the challenges, what are the barriers to widespread EV adoption? We looked at other agencies' plans and guidance from the state as well. These are the guiding principles that we developed and used as we were developing the plan. Again, we really wanted to align with our and support the state, all of the local climate action plans. Equity, it was a big part of this. We looked at all of our programs through an equity lens. And this project, as well as all of our projects we do at MCEP, are really geared towards capitalizing on our ability to work countywide. And that really helps to drive cost efficiencies and make our programs much more effective. We, when we were developing the strategies, wanted to focus government actions on those that can most efficiently use public funds and resources. We know that those are in limited supply. And for that reason, we want to leverage regional, state and federal funds and resources as much as possible here in Marin County. And also to support the private market because in their sales and in charger installation, because we know a lot of the momentum in expanding EVs and the whole marketplace does come from the private market, but there is a role for government to play as well. So this chart looks pretty similar to the ones that I was just showing you. This is countywide emissions back in 2020. And transportation, like Larkspur, is more than half. In the countywide, it's 54% of emissions. And 80% of those emissions come from passenger vehicles. So our plan really is focusing on passenger vehicles. But we do talk about commercial vehicles, particularly as they relate to municipal fleets and the need to convert all of the municipal fleets eventually to electric vehicles. Our existing conditions, the data I have is through the end of 2021. And there's about 12,000, almost 12,400 zero emission vehicles in Marin by the end of 2021. Undoubtedly, by now, it's much higher than that. When I talk about ZEVs, we mean both battery electric, as well as plug-in hybrid cars and fuel cell electric vehicles. But we have very few of those in Marin. So countywide, almost 6% of registered vehicles are ZEVs. That's much better than the statewide average of 2.8%. We're also the second highest in all of California, second only to Santa Clara County. Larkspur's rate at the end of 2021 was 7.1% of all registered passenger vehicles in Larkspur were zero electric vehicles. So that's better than the countywide average. These are the GHG reduction goals for and our climate action plans and the the targets for ZEV registrations for 2030. And they're all, they're a little variety in them. And like I said, we wanted to support all of these goals. Larkspur's goal is 40% below 1990 level. That is what the statewide goal is. And your target for ZEVs is 33% of all the light-duty vehicles that are traveling in Larkspur are going to be ZEVs by the year 2030. So one-third of the vehicles. And you're at, again, 7% now. So if we're looking at like a 35% target, which is just a little bit higher than what Larkspur's is, we need to sustain this growth rate that we've had over the last three years, which is 21%. We need to sustain that every year through 2030, and we would actually get to 35%. So it's not an unreasonable goal. We may even do better than that as the market continued, really is starting to expand now. And but as a market becomes more mature, the growth rates usually will will drop off. So we'll so overall, an average 21% will get us where we need to go. That's definitely going to be helped by state legislation. There is, you probably heard of state regulation that is aiming to phase out the sale of internal combustion engines by 2035, so that 100% of all new vehicle sales in 2035 will be zero emission vehicles. And so CARB, the California Air Resources Board, does have sales targets beginning in 2026 that they want to achieve. This is looking, if you look at the lighter line, is the state target. So in 2023, they're anticipating 21% of sales will be, will be ZEVs. And that actually is what it is at right now. When you look at the dashboard that the CEC provides, in Marin, it's 33%. So we're doing much better. But in order to meet our target, we have to do better than the state average, which or with the state expectations are for state, the the impact of that state legislation. We have to, so we can't just sit back and rely on the state. We need to do something more to reach our goals. So there are studies that have been done that talk about how much EV charging we need. And this is in Marin County, what we're looking at. So the CEC has estimated that there are about 740 chargers in Marin. So these are public and shared private. Shared private are those that are used in multifamily and at workplaces. But they're intended for their residents and for their employees. Undoubtedly, there's much more EV chargers in private homes. It's just very difficult to track them, and the CEC doesn't track them. It's hard to get that permanent data because everybody, all the jurisdictions kind of do that differently. But we know that a lot of this is going to be driven by the private homes. 71% of housing units in Marin are single-family homes, and they, so those people can charge at home. They don't really necessarily need public chargers unless they're doing long distances, especially with the long range that we have, long battery range that we have in in EVs at this point. So really, we're doing pretty good on the public chargers. As you can see, that graph that's showing the projected need, we would do need more public chargers. But the big heavy lift here is going to be these shared private chargers, especially multifamily buildings. Because and the existing ones are the toughest really to get at. But the opportunity here, especially through our reach codes, is to ensure that all new multifamily buildings are ready and that they have the ability for all of these new electric vehicles that we're going to have and need to have that they don't become those multifamily buildings that are hard, that I'm saying are hard to retrofit in the future, that they're all ready, built and ready for EV charging. So TAM did a siting plan. This is a little old now at 2019, but they looked at where we needed level two chargers. So those are the chargers that would take like six to eight hours to get a full charge as as well as level three chargers. And those where you can usually do a full charge in under an hour, depending on your vehicle. The level two chargers are best suited to places where people park for a long time, like at smart stations, ferry terminals, park-and-ride lots, schools, any place, any, but also if we have them, and I've seen this, if they're in shopping centers, especially ones that are near multifamily buildings, then people will leave their cars there to charge overnight, and they can walk back to their building. So there are, there's a need for level two chargers for that purpose. And also level three chargers, especially along frontage roads, any place when people are driving long distances and need to pull off the road and and get a quick charge so they can continue on their way. Looking at municipal fleets, we did an inventory of how many, and these are all battery electric vehicles. These are not those plug-in hybrids. So Larkspur, when we did this inventory, had two passenger cars that were battery electric vehicles, which is pretty similar to all of the rest of the cities and towns when you kind of look at this for size of jurisdiction. And then finally, in the plan, we go through this where we're identifying all the barriers to EV adoption, and we've sorted them in this area. Vehicle technology, vehicles are getting much better. Every year, the EV range increases. We're seeing a lot more vehicle types, including like the Ford F-150 Lightning and a lot of trucks, you know, light-duty trucks that are available now. and you know, light duty trucks that are available now. The problem still is lack of vehicle availability. There still can be some long wait lines for them. Charging, as I mentioned, not enough public charging, but, and also just a difficulty in getting multifamily chargers. And there's, there are some other issues too, even at home, installing level two chargers at home, especially for the older homes that have 100 amp panels and need an upgrade. For economics, the prices of these cars are still higher, but very quickly reaching parity with ICEs. There are a lot of incentives out there, but they are complicated. And there's a lot of websites you can go to and kind of try to dope out what the rebates and tax credits that are available for EVs. There's still a lot of misinformation out there about EVs and resistance to change, of course. And then we also quantified or qualified what the resistance or the barriers to expanded use of e-bikes and e-scooters, because that's another great way to get around. They are higher in prices. A big problem with those is just the lack of secure parking, because they do get stolen. So the EV strategy has 36 actions in four areas. So our expectation is that the jurisdictions are going to go through, all the staff will go through and identify which actions are relevant, and the jurisdiction wants to take on, because not all of, it's not kind of a one-size-fits-all approach. We're, we're looking for you to have, to individualize this plan to best suit your needs and then prioritize those actions. And we've included a sample work plan in the appendix for that purpose. So very briefly about the strategy's actions, there's four actions that are related to community outreach and education. A couple of these are around conducting and supporting marketing campaigns and utilizing the city's existing channels of communication to kind of get, push information out, like rebates and incentives. There are 16 actions around accelerating public charging infrastructure. One of those is through developing and adopting a model reach code that has higher charging requirements than what is in the state building code. Also identifying locations for public chargers in your jurisdiction, and then including those and planning for them in capital improvement plans. Looking at putting those chargers near frequently used properties like community centers and your multifamily buildings, and also planning for e-bike facilities, whether those are chargers or secure parking or better biking facilities to make people comfortable so that they take their e-bikes out. There are 11 actions around increasing the municipal fleet to electrifying the entire fleet. And our goal here is that 100% of our, all of our municipal fleets will be electric vehicles by 2030. Certainly, there are more and more, especially like I said, with the light duty trucks and more options that are, will be coming for those medium and heavy duty vehicles as well. So identifying kind of the low-hanging fruit at first, but actually formulating a fleet replacement strategy. And then the chargers that will provide the electricity for your municipal fleet. And then finally, we have five actions around just supporting and advocating for policy and funding that accelerates EV adoption. Looking for more funding for municipal needs and also using that. And this is just one of the ways to support equity priority communities, but certainly ensuring that we get the word out to equity priority communities, that we target that outreach to those folks, that we ensure that we are building and installing EV chargers in low-income areas as well, and also providing deeper discounts and rebates and incentives for low-income households so that they have an equal opportunity to own EVs. So, so our recommendations to all of the jurisdictions is that we are listening and to your comments on the strategy, and then we are asking our jurisdictions councils to direct staff to complete the work plan, Appendix A in the plan, and then return to council with progress and how you're doing on this plan. And again, we will be working together at the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership to implement the plan as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you again. Any questions from the council? Looks like we don't. So we'll go to public comment.
Hello again, David Mahler, live here in Larkspur. I'd like to start off by, again, commending Christine O'Rourke for another excellent report. Really, this one is just an outstanding report. And I want to advise the council, the report contains, so this was a great summary Christine presented, but the report contains some very helpful background information about EVs and chargers. It thoughtfully identifies barriers to EV adoption and provides a number of recommendations that jurisdictions can take to accelerate. And Christine had a few highlights. So I wanted to ask that if you haven't really looked through the report, please do it. It's very educational about the whole EV space. And similar to the greenhouse gas inventory report, this EV acceleration study reinforces the importance of Larkspur proceeding with adopting the green building and EV charger reach code that was discussed at last week's special meeting, public workshop. And in particular, I want to focus on one thing. This, this strategy report clearly identifies that the greatest need for, is for shared private chargers, especially in multi-unit developments. This is a serious barrier to EV adoption by residents who live in these multi-unit developments. And this is why, at the workshop last week, we recommended that Larkspur's new reach code include enhanced EV charger requirements, not only for new parking facilities, but also for existing parking facilities that undergo major renovation. And this is to help ensure that all those residents, you know, Larkspur has a lot of multi-unit dwellings, has someplace to charge their EVs as we increasingly transition to them. Finally, the recommended actions in the EV acceleration strategy really represents some evolved thinking since Larkspur's climate action plan, 2021. And I'd like to request that staff compare the two and implement the most progressive of those measures, and especially the two next steps that Christine highlighted the end of her presentation. So thank you again for your continued focus on climate action.
Thank you, David. Any other comments? Seeing none, Allison, do we have anyone in the queue on Zoom?
Looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no public comment.
Okay. So again, Christine, thank you. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Scott.
I just have one question. You've mentioned subsidies. Are you aware of local jurisdictions that give some type of subsidies for either cars or charging stations or anything like that, that the private sector does?
I have heard of some counties, I can't name them off the top of my head, because I just can't remember, but sometimes counties or especially, you know, the like MCE offers some rebates as well. So I think it's probably more likely that the utilities are providing those rebates than, than the local jurisdictions themselves.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Great. Thanks again, Christine. So with that, we conclude our presentations, and we'll move on to item number four, which is the approval of the consent calendar. So we have six items on the consent calendar, one of which, of course, we discussed the reusable food ordinance, did our readings, and now it's on consent. Does anyone on the council wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, does anybody in the audience or in the public wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent as a whole.
I move to approve the consent calendar, the whole.
Great. I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Candell. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Mayor Paulson?
Yes, thank you. And so we'll move on to number five, the city manager's oral report.
I'll be super brief, Mr. Mayor. I know we have a long evening. I'm gonna just highlight an event that I know a lot of folks are already aware of and excited about, and that's on Sunday. Friends of the library are gonna be hosting Touch Truck over at the high school parking lot. Bring out your family. Great opportunity. They have 30 large-scale trucks on the premises for kids to touch, learn about, just be plain excited about. Should be a good, should be a good day, and it's a nice fundraiser for the friends and for our libraries as a result. Turn back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So then we'll move on. Unless there are any questions about anything else. No. So we'll move on to the council member oral reports and comments.
Okay, a few things. Late last month, the mayor and I were invited by TAM to go walk around Bellum and Anderson area to look at the three potential off-ramps that they're looking at for connecting Highway 101 to 580. And it was informational. I was a little more familiar with the area than the mayor, but it was helpful to see it. But like my predecessor, Councilmember Hilmer, I still have a lot of issues with what they're proposing, because all three of the recommendations that they have are substandard. They do not meet either California or federal highway standards for connecting one freeway to another. And I really don't see much of a benefit, quite frankly, to Larkspur, the Ross Valley area with what they're planning. But we're gonna wait and look at the traffic analysis and see if it's something we should really recommend. I also attended a Zoom meeting, which was held by the California Preservation Foundation over at Port Mason. Several members of our preservation, heritage preservation board gave a talk about doing a historic inventory for small cities. It's usually things that are done by LA and San Francisco, the bigger cities. And they wanted to present an alternative for the smaller cities on how to look at it. And it was a great education for me, as a new member of the council, to listen to the history of how we got to where we are in the historic inventory. And it isn't complete yet. So it is something that's on my mind when we get into our budget issues and discussion about how we might be able to complete the inventory. But hats off to Kirsten Case, who was our former senior planner here. One of our planners here, Rich Storick, and Hillary Colhane, who are on our preservation board, and they gave a wonderful presentation. I was hoping to have a link for the other board members, but it hasn't been posted on the website as of this afternoon. But when it does become available, I will make it. There was a Transportation Authority of Marin meeting, and the real hot topic was the crossing guard locations. Because of the improvements to the Bonner Bridge and to Sir Francis Drake, a number of our, only one of ours, but several that are in our nearby community dropped down on the list because they use an objective ranking, and the improvements that have been made to Sir Francis Drake and Bonner Road dropped those locations below the cutoff level. What the board decided to do is essentially to keep those guards in place for at least until December. There will be a new traffic survey that'll be done probably in September, and they'll see if there are any changes that might require restaffing those locations. The problem is, the list is very extensive, probably over 200 locations in the county that could use guards, but they do cost $20,000 apiece roughly to man. So they had to pick and choose which ones, and they tried to use very objective standards. We'll see what happens with that as it goes forward. I'll keep on top of that. They also, we've selected an agency that'll be trying to measure the future impacts of sea level rise on transportation facilities in Marin, and that includes both public transportation and private cars. So this is, it's a long-term thing. It'll probably be about three to four years before we really have a big report. The other meeting I attended was the Marin Transit Agency's meeting, and that was an interesting turn. There have been, other than the small buses that Marin Transit already runs on fixed routes, they've had six programs that provided what we call last mile connections. There was the Catch a Ride program, Dial a Ride program in Nevada, another connect program up in Nevada. And essentially, what they did was cut it from six programs to five. But they also changed, instead of having to go through an agency to, for seniors to connect with their rides, they'll now be able to deal either directly with the ride provider, be it Uber or taxi. And I think it's gonna help, quite frankly. Uber, of course, is an app, but with the taxi program, they'll be talking directly to the dispatcher as opposed to a third party. So I think it will make it simpler, and they are gonna be monitoring, moderating, monitoring it. They're also gonna be studying more about the problems with seniors in West Marin, how to help them as far as more transportation, because it's just gotten horrible out along the coast. And that's it.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Way, I think you had something or?
So just two things. I do represent Larkspur on the Project Home Key South Aliso property that is coming along and will be occupied by long-term supportive housing residents who were previously homeless. And that is on 1251 South Aliso Boulevard. Many of you are aware, but there will be a community meeting on May 16th on Zoom, for those of you interested in how that project's coming along and what the outreach to the community and public safety concerns have been met there. So if you're interested, you can log on to the 1251 website and sign up to be part of that meeting. The second is, I serve on the Marin Mayor's and Councilmembers Legislative Committee, which meets once a month with every representative from every city and town, and we met on Monday. We have lobbyists who represent the Marin cities, who help us look through legislation that's passing and going through the state governance. So two things jumped out at me. One is, they are projecting a deficit in California of $20 to $26 billion for next year. Of course, with taxes being, not being required until October, in many jurisdictions, it's still up in the air. But that's a big change from last year and the year before, when we had a huge budget surplus. The other thing that was pretty shocking, I would say, is that there are dozens and dozens of new housing bills. We've seen lots of them already that are being passed, and there are dozens and dozens more. And many of them are streamlining housing approvals, dramatically streamlining them. 423 Senate Bill, 423 is an example. So lots and lots of bills that are now being introduced and have a lot of support that will streamline housing acceptability and proposals and remove further local control. So if you're very interested in the process that's going on, reach out to our assembly person, Damon Connolly, about that, because some of them are pretty significant. We've seen a lot of them so far, but a lot of the reports from our lobbyists are that there is really not a debate as to whether they're going to pass. The debate is what type of labor arrangements are going to be required, whether it's going to be unionized labor and non-unionized labor requirements. So another one that is significant will be taking away further local control is to have straight administrative approval of housing projects without even stepping into the local jurisdictions. So if you're interested in seeing what's happening, make sure you pay attention to what's happening in Sacramento. We meet once a month, and I'm sure we'll have another update soon, because many of these bills are being brought forward into different committees, and then they will be brought forward for a vote by June. So I'll keep everybody informed. But reach out to our assembly person to express some concern about those if you're interested.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Way. Councilmember Harif.
Thank you. And just very briefly, I serve as Larkspur's representative, as many know, on the MCE Board of Directors and chair the Board's Executive Committee, which met today, and I led that meeting. There are a number of interesting issues that were covered, mostly for informational purposes, including in particular, various proposals to increase. regionalized coordination of Western states' energy markets, including California's. Those are all kind of, kind of in the works, but it's important for us to be very mindful of what those efforts are to make sure that California continues to have a leading role in managing those regional, those regionalization efforts. Because California is by far the biggest consumer of electricity in the Western states. The the one action item that we did have today was consideration of a this is a mouthful, an interim load management standards compliance plan. I'd have no idea. The reason for this is that the California Energy Commission has adopted standards to require essentially real-time pricing for electricity consumption throughout the state of California, including the service territory of MCE. And they're applying those standards to entities like MCE, which is a community choice aggregation entity, which is technically not subject to regulation by the commission. And they have no authority to extend these standards to MCE. No legal authority. That's a, that's a problem. But what MCE has tried to do is to develop a plan that will allow for voluntary compliance with most, but not all of the new requirements. Mostly because the Energy Commission has adopted a compliance schedule that is not technically feasible for organizations like MCE. But the staff plan is proposing a path to achieve compliance over a reasonable period of time. And we hope that they will make progress with it, and the executive committee voted to approve the plan. And we will now begin implementation of it. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Harif.
Sure. Two, two things quickly. First is representatives for Safe Routes to School. They discussed what Councilmember Carol had mentioned, that the County of Marin has decided to remove one of the crossing guards that was on South Aliso and Bonner. And that my understanding is it's supposed to take place actually in September, or maybe it ends in June. I'm not sure. It goes by the school year. And at the same time, the County of Marin, as Councilmember Wei said, is is doing the Home Key Project on South Aliso, which is right near there. And it was brought to my attention, and they said, well, can the City of Larkspur pick up the tab for a new crossing guard there? And my response was, it was the county's infinite wisdom that took away the crap course, the the crossing guard and the county who basically put this project in our lap, and I asked them to go to the county. So what I would ask if people are interested in having a crossing guard there, that you contact your county representative, which is Katie Rice, and let her know that you feel that that would be appropriate. Because she's really the one that makes the decision on that. The second thing I want to point out is for the Commons Foundation, as everyone knows, we're building a new library. And we are moving forward with that, with dates, with getting requests for, you know, RFQs, RPs to get the, get some bids and some ideas. As, as far as that goes, we had a vote in here and we decided, you know, that the size of the library was going to be kind of reduced. We were not going to move the city offices there in the six to seven thousand foot range at this point. The feedback that we're getting is unfortunately not as positive as we were hoping for. Only because there were some synergies that were going to take place if there was another building there that will no longer take place. So for example, if there were county offices there, we would have one, you know, shared bathroom, shared closet space, you know, a bunch of of things that we'd be able to share economies of scale that we no longer have. And as a result, the amount of meeting space that we're going to have is less than we were hoping. So what we are asking in the proposals is to kind of give us an alternative to, hey, if we, you know, put a little bit more money into this and we got a little more building space, what would that look like? What would it cost? So now we we're hoping to get kind of dual proposals now so that we have something to to talk about when it comes back here and maybe have an option to have some type of compromise that will be within our budget and something that people will be proud of and happy when it opens. So we will keep you apprised of that. That will be coming in the next couple of months. And that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Kendall. And I'll just go briefly. I know we have a long meeting ahead. I'm on the SMARTboard, and I was at their meeting today. It's budget season. It's going to happen here tonight. It's budget season for Larkspur, and the four things SMART really looks at is more ridership and pathways, bikes, walking, extensions, you know, possibly out to the thirty-seven to, you know, the the East Bay and North, and also freight, which is something they've had to pull. So if anybody has any input, I, and I say this generally, if anybody wants to provide any input to me personally, I'm I'm always in this room on Tuesdays at two thirty, and I would love to get more about SMART or about housing or about anything else. And with that, I guess we'll conclude our council member reports and move on to the item where I think we have almost a hundred people or at least thirty-five in this room. So we're going to reopen our public hearing. We have, we met earlier discussing this on the nineteenth of April. And so this is the appeal of the Planning Commission decision to approve application twelve fifty-five, sorry, twenty-one fifty-five request for conditional use permit, circulation assessment permit, slope use, et cetera, for the North Magnolia Project. So we're reopening the public hearing. And I wanted to maybe first start off by asking council members if there are any disclaimers or anything as we did last time. Anybody have anything, nothing new? Okay, great. And for myself, I want to say I was invited and actually very eager and curious to speak with both the applicants and the appellants and decided to have no communications with anybody. So there's no ex parte communications, because I really felt, you know, whatever decisions we make, the information is all here in front of us. You know, we're going to be deliberating more tonight, and of course, getting public comment from you. But, you know, I think the community wants is impartial a decision as possible. So I think that reflects all my other council members' actions, and that was my decision. So to move this forward, I was hoping to ask staff maybe to help frame out what I think has been a very involved discussion, which has a legal dimension, a financial dimension, an architectural dimension, community dimensions, and there's a lot of specialized knowledge. On staff, we have our attorney, Sky Woodruff. We have Sean Kennings, who's been working on the project in detail in the architecture and with the applicant. We have our community director here, Elise Simonian, and I believe we may even have our public works, or at least we did last time, a director, and of course, our city manager. So perhaps I'll hand this over to Sky for starters or to Dan, and and maybe you can get started on how to proceed.
Okay. So first, what, just to mostly for the benefit of the public, because I think council recalls that that where you left things was that you were going to continue with your deliberations, having closed the public hearing, closed the public comment portion of the hearing at that point. You were going to continue deliberations. And then if council is prepared to take a final action tonight, hear a public comment prior to taking that action. We haven't, staff does not have anything new to report. There are a couple of housekeeping items that I guess I'll cover after, after a few other comments. But because there were there were, there were, there were, and I, and I want to apologize in advance about the legalistic nature of this proceeding at this point. As you know, I don't usually talk this much during council meetings, but this is the the nature of things that Sacramento has handed to cities. So unfortunately, I need to to be more involved and and provide you with some legal guidance about this project. In particular, I think without, without covering again all of the issues that the mayor just mentioned, there were a few things that I wanted to touch on because of some things that were kind of lingering when council decided to to continue the hearing and and to tonight. One of those has to do with the making of findings under the municipal code. The municipal code requires for this project conditional use permit, investing tentative map, and circulation assessment permit, and there are findings in the municipal code associated with all of those. There were some questions from council about about, about the, about making findings for those aspects of the applications that are before you on appeal. So what I wanted to touch on briefly is that the findings that the municipal code requires have to be supported by what's referred to as substantial evidence. That means reasonable adequate evidence to support the findings. The resolution prepared by staff that's in front of you identifies substantial evidence in the record to support each of the necessary findings. So staff has reviewed the record, pulled out the evidence that's that supports those, and it's available to you if you choose to proceed with denying the appeal and approving the project, that evidence is in front of you. To deny the project, the city council must identify other evidence in the record that supports denial. It's not enough to simply state that you can't make the findings. Ultimately, evidence will have to be identified in the record that, that, that you determine leads you to deter, to to not be able to make those findings. And so ultimately, if you were to head in the direction of denying the project, staff would prepare a resolution for that, but would need you to identify evidence in the record to, that you believe supports not making those findings. I also wanted to make a, a, a point that that I think is important to understand, which is that in this context, personal opinions about the project are not evidence. That's, that's, that's the legal standard. But I also want to touch on the fact that even if council identifies evidence in the record that supports a determination that you can't make the findings under the municipal code, to proceed to, to deny the project or to condition the project in a way that makes the project infeasible for affordable housing development, the density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act require you to make additional findings. So under the density bonus law, conditioning the project to, for example, eliminate the fourth story would constitute a denial of the waiver that the applicant has requested. That's the way HCD views it. That's the way case law views it. Under the density bonus law, denial of a waiver requires findings, and I'm not going to read all of them, but it requires findings that the requested waiver would have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety, and there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the impact. And that and then the density bonus law cross references to the Housing Accountability Act for the definition of a specific adverse impact. And importantly, the city bears the burden of proof regarding this. The statute has squarely placed that burden on the city. Under the Housing Accountability Act, to deny the the project or to condition approval in a manner that renders the housing development project infeasible for affordable housing development, the city must find that the project would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety, et cetera, as I just read, same, same, same terms. A specific adverse impact is defined as one, and we covered this to some degree in the last meeting, as a significant quantifiable, direct and unavoidable impact that is based on objective identified written public health or safety standards that were in effect at the time the project application was deemed complete. The city also bears the burden of proof on this issue, and there is actually a heightened standard of proof for this. It is not substantial evidence, is a preponderance of the evidence, which means that the city bears the burden of showing that the evidence for denial or conditioning outweighs the evidence or is greater than the evidence in the record for approving the project or not imposing the condition. On, on this point of feasibility, this is one of the minor housekeeping items. I did want to point out that the applicant just before the meeting has submitted a letter from their capital partner stating that the, a three-story project would be financially infeasible because it would not attract interest from a construction lender, but that the four-story project proposed would. Finally, one other thing that I, that I think is important to point out is that we talked some at the last meeting about litigation risks and how litigation might proceed. One aspect of that that we did not discuss, but that I think is important for the council and the public to understand, is that changes in state law in the last few years have actually given the House, the the State Department of Housing and Community Development Enforcement Authority over these laws. And they have issued a number of notices of violation to cities that have denied or conditioned projects in ways that they felt either violated the statutes or or required cities to provide additional information to support those actions. Those, so same changes in the law authorize HCD to refer cases to the Office of the Attorney General for enforcement. So I do want, and and I think that that everybody who's paid any attention to the news about these issues has heard at least some story about several of the cases that the Attorney General's Office has actually filed against cities regarding projects in their communities. The applicant has submitted a number of letters from HCD, including some in nearby communities where HCD determined that a city was in violation of these laws. So in, I, I want the council to understand in making these decisions that we've already discussed aspects of of legal risk related to a potential challenge from the applicant or potential legal challenge from the appellants. But there is also serious legal risk of a finding of a violation by HCD and potential litigation by the Office of the Attorney General if either of those offices finds that the council has denied the project or conditioned in a manner that's inconsistent with the density bonus law or the Housing Accountability Act. So I've, that covers all of the legalistic issues. The couple of minor housekeeping points, the applicant did submit the plans that that they mentioned at the last meeting that removes the two commercial units in buildings A and B. And they also submitted some alternative designs for the sidewalk and bike lane alignments. Those are available for you if those are of any interest for consideration, and we have some, some potential conditions of approval for those, if there's things that the council is interested in pursuing, as well as an additional explanation of how the density bonus concession would allow for the elimination of those, those two commercial units. Those conclude my comments. The playing director and Sean are here to answer any other questions that I can't cover, and of course, I'm available to answer any legal questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Sky. So council, any questions for our city attorney? Okay, Councilmember Wei, please.
Thanks for that overview. I we've had a lot of letters submitted, and we've had a lot of information. So some of the things that jumped jumped out, which I'm glad you clarified, were the HCD letters that were submitted by the appellant. Was it not the appellant, the property, the applicant, excuse me? And there were dozens of those letters. I only printed out a few to get some clarification on them, but the one that was sent to Mill Valley for their twenty-five unit complex that they're working on there and involves quite a lot of detail, but it also talks about Attorney General Bonta's housing strike force. And the conclusion is that the strike force and the accountability will be brought to bear on Mill Valley. Can, I looked up what sort of some of the some of what the Attorney General's Office Strike Force has the capacity to do to a city or or to remove from a city. And do you have any more information on that?
I, I don't have much to add in addition to what's in the letters. I could certainly pull them up and and, you know, go over them, but but I think that the what I've seen so far is that the litigation efforts by the Attorney General's Office and the Strike Force begin with letters requiring the jurisdictions in question to first attempt to justify under the, under, under the statutory frameworks, the decisions that they made. But are very clear that failing to produce that evidence will result in in legal action by the Attorney General's Office. Thus far, I, I don't believe that any, I'm not aware of any city that has actually been subjected to a final conclusion in a case that resulted in penalties, but did, but certainly the Attorney General's Office is interested in seeking court direction to those jurisdictions to require them to either make the necessary findings if they can, and if they can't, to reverse their decisions and approve the, the projects or remove the conditions that they believe are in violation of the statutes.
Okay, those are, those letters are in the public on the doc, on our public Okay, those are those letters are in the public um on the doc on our public um. What am I trying to say?
They're included in the agenda packet.
Yeah, they are. I just I I think we refer people to those if they're interested in hearing what the current Attorney General's uh take is on the current law. So, because I know there's been a lot of questions as to whether the law has been interpreted. This is the primary interpretation at this point, from what I understand.
HCD um has been assigned um uh the role of providing um interpretation and guidance at a regulatory level for these statutes. Um, they have done that primarily through um a series of guidance documents and through these interpretive letters. Um, so there's a why, there's a there's a growing body of interpretation that we need to look to to them to do. Unfortunately, um, they have not followed the pathway of um adopting actual regulations under the Administrative Procedure Act, but there is a growing body of interpretive guidance from them that we have to take seriously um because of the possibility, because of the likelihood that reviewing courts will um defer to them as the interpretive body for for these statutes.
Yeah. All right. Thanks. I I found those to be very enlightening, unfortunately.
Thank you. Uh, yes, council member Kandell.
Sorry, a quick question. Um, are are these statues, do they include attorney's fees in the sense that if we deny the project and there's a lawsuit and the the courts say we should have approved the project, uh, do we not only pay our attorney's fees, but we have to pay their attorney's fees as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, uh, other questions? Okay, so uh what I'd like to do is uh we will go to public comment uh tonight. Not not right now, but I'm just framing out that uh we'll have that and and we'll limit it to two minutes. Last time we had uh longer time periods for the appellant and longer time periods for the applicants, and the meeting ran quite long. Uh, I'd like to start off with the council's um, you know, deliberation. And I I believe where one place I'd like to start where we left off was that we were drafted a resolution for council consideration uh which provides findings for this action. So the the resolution twenty point twenty slash two-three was denying an appeal and approving application number twenty-one twenty-five for the Magnolia Village project at eleven thirty-three to eleven sixty-nine Magnolia Avenue. So um maybe we can just go around to council members. I know uh we had expressed some closing thoughts at the last meeting, and then we decided to postpone any motion or decision. But I thought we would start off by, you know, given all that's been said architecturally, legally, financially, you know, voices from the community, each member maybe framing their thoughts and, you know, giving the public to an understanding of where you stand at this moment. Uh, council member care, um, yeah, go ahead, Kandell.
Okay, uh, first of all, I I want to thank everybody, uh, everyone online, everybody here, everybody who made comments, everybody who sent letters. This is what it's about, local government is getting feedback. And and, you know, there were some comments last time that really struck me and 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 I, you know, kind of touched, which like, we we want you to fight for us. That that was the message, you know, it was really listen, we're against this project. It's too big. It's got all these problems. You are our representatives, and you're there to fight for us and to do, you know, uh, you know, what is in our community's best interest. I I have I have heard that loud and clear, um, and I agree with that sentiment. That's why we're here. Okay, I also agree with the sentiment that there are things about the project that I really don't like. I think it is too big. I don't like the fourth floor. I don't like, you know, there there are a bunch of things I don't like about it. The challenge that I'm having um is that the state has passed laws, and those laws basically have taken control away from the local government. They have set up laws that say basically California does not have enough low-income housing. Um, if somebody is willing to build low-income housing, we're going to let you bypass the local government. And, you know, we don't care if the local government likes it or not. We don't care if the community likes it or not. We have decided as a state that we need low-income housing, and, you know, if it's ugly, it's ugly, but it's going to be housing. You know, and it puts us in a very tough position because I I I understand what the community is saying, and and I'm not disagreeing with the community. But I feel like our choices on this council are to approve the project, and it gets built, or our choices are to deny the project. We get sued, we lose, it costs us quarter of a million to a half a million dollars, and the project gets built. That that's, you know, and I've spoken to the city attorney about this, and I've, you know, tried to do the legal research on it. And and I I think that that's just the reality of it right now. And as we are representing our constituents, which is everybody, you know, in the city of Larkspur, one of my main things is fiduciary responsibility. Spend our money wisely. People work hard for their money. They pay taxes to the city. Don't waste it, you know, do it for things that are that are really going to help our city. You know, and while I agree, I'm not over the moon about this project, I feel that if we deny this project, we are just basically taking a quarter to a half a million dollars and flushing it down the toilet. And I just, I I struggle because I I, like I said, I I I know that's what you want us to do. And I know we're here to do what you want us to do, but at some point, you know, I I we have to also talk to our city attorney and do what we think is the best interest of of the city. And it just, it feels, and 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 I'm asking, Sky, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it feels like if we deny this project, we're going to lose. It's going to cost us a lot of money, and they're going to build the project anyway. You know, and like I said, if if I'm wrong, tell me. But but I, that's that's my take from the cases and the the laws that have been passed, that it's really, we don't have that ability. And then if people are unhappy about that, you know, Damon Connolly is is one of our representatives. We got to go to our representatives and say, hey, you got to change this state law because you've taken the power away from our local jurisdiction to say what we like and what we don't like. You know, and we think that should be a locally controlled issue, not a state issue. And if that's how we feel, that's the path we have to take. If we deny this project, like I said, I I I just feel like it's it's not going to get us where we want to go. Um, so that's, you know, that's where I'm coming from. And and please, if people disagree with me, if anyone's got a different legal analysis, Sky, if you got a different legal analysis, whoever, just tell me I'm wrong. I I I, this is just where it looks to me that the landscape is right now. So we're we're keeping it right now. This is for the council. So if anyone in the council or our staff, please help me.
Okay, um, thank you. Thank you, Scott. So we'll we'll have plenty of time tonight, but thanks for, you know, letting us know your thoughts. Next, uh, did you want to go, council member Carol?
No.
Okay, well, that's honest.
I'd rather be at the Lark Theater at this moment, enjoying my buttered popcorn.
But you're going to go anyway.
Yeah. It's interesting, because earlier in the evening after our celebration of City Hall, I was reminded in a conversation about one of our last big controversies, and that was the statue of Don Quixote, and how appropriate that is to this conversation tonight. We are tilting at windmills. The fact is, we have a governor who has very loudly, very publicly made it clear he wants more housing in the state of California, period, ironically, a former Kent Field resident. And he is the one who's pushing for hundreds of thousands of building units. And he's the one putting the pressure on both, not just the Assembly, but the Senate to get this done, and he carries a lot of weight, unfortunately, uh, on this matter. Uh, I attended a Sausalito Chamber of Commerce function last month with um Mike McGuire, who I'm very impressed with. He doesn't talk like a politician. He really does say what he thinks, and he is very aware of the situation. Uh, in his role as leader of the Senate, he can only lead where the others will follow, and he is fighting this, but it's the pressures on him as well as the Assembly to get these things done. I represent all thirteen thousand plus residents of the city of Larkspur. This project is wrong for that neighborhood. I agree completely. Three stories I could probably live with. Uh, I think there are things we could do to help with the parking and with the bike paths and with the pedestrian pathways, but our hands are tied. To put this city at financial risk, I attend other city council meetings because of my business, and so many of our cities in this county are in financial straits. The economy and the way forward is murky, to put it best. What's going to happen? Are we going to hit a recession? How big of a recession? And I look at the financial risk of this city, and I just, I can't. I'm sorry, I cannot go tilting at this particular windmill. I think it would get beyond a half a million in fees, and very possibly if it got appealed up to the State Supreme Court. We're talking money we don't have, or we would have to be cutting parks. We'd have to be cutting fire. We'd have to be cutting police, and I'm just not willing to risk it. Um, I think we have to see the process through. And that's my thought.
Thank you, council member. Uh, next.
Sure. So I, first of all, I thank you all for being here and all of you who are on Zoom. And uh, I appreciate all the comments that have come in by email uh and by letter, and even one tonight was hand dropped off. So it's a very engaged community. Really appreciate that. I I've read all of them. Um, I've discussed all of them with um city manager, not with my colleagues because we're not allowed to do that, but um, and everybody has made some really interesting points. There's a lot of concerns uh about the project that I think my two council members have um related. Ones that also the Planning Commission related um and worked with the developer uh on a few changes, which they were able to receive. Some of the changes that have been asked on the um by emails from the community, for instance, the fourth floor um outdoor deck area. The information provided from the project uh developer is that that's not attainable for them to be able to do that um in reference to their ability then to make a financially uh viable project to meet the requirements of having the four lower-income um units. And that's just the reality of what they have to face um, but we're all facing in local government is that there is a checklist of what needs um uh waivers and concessions that um are need to be met in a project. And when they're met, it's signed off on at from HCD as an appropriate uh um project. And this uh developer has checked off all the boxes. Um, so I don't, uh, we've worked with them. The city has worked with them for a year and a half or so to work on the project and made some modifications. They've submitted a secondary idea of perhaps moving the um commercial property uh from that, which is something we can um later discuss. But like my two other council members said, is that we are under strict obligations from the state to meet housing mandates, which create very little opportunity for changes on a local uh level. But I also realize that this project area is exactly what the legislation considered. Infill, not suburban sprawl, a defunct commercial property that has been empty for a long time. This is all in the legislation. Um, a developer who's willing to put in a substantial amount of work to shore up a um an area that's hard to develop because it has a retaining wall need, this fits in there. Uh, it's within walking distance to schools, walking distance to groceries, walking distance to all the things that fit into the state's transportation rules. They've checked all the boxes. I also stood in Piper Park this on Sunday, and I looked across the creek, and there are hundreds and hundreds of apartment and condominium units that are three, four, and five stories in Larkspur already. There are, then they've been there for fifty years. They've been there for forty years. The entire creekside on South Aliseo and all the way up the Bon Air Hill is multi-story units. We have them here. We have them in Larkspur. It's unusual on Magnolia for sure, but it's not an unusual housing component of our community already. Many of the apartment complexes and condominiums that are in Larkspur Landing, which is our jurisdiction, four, five, six stories over there. The ones that are six stories are built upon upon the ravine up against the quarry. Um, this is up against a wall too. So, um, I I think we're facing a situation where the um, the state legislature, the governor, and our housing crisis is all going to come to a head in the next few years. This is the beginning of it um as far as uh taking away opportunities for saying no um from local governments. We're stuck in that, and I think we need to continue to work as a community to make sure that we um pay attention to what's happening uh as more and more legislation comes through. But I think we have to be responsible and respectful to our fiduciary duty, um, which is to um make sure that we're not taking our general fund budget and um locking up our staff and our our attorneys for dozens of hours and hundreds and thousands of dollars. So that's where I am. Um, very much appreciate the input people have brought forward. Um, but we have to look at this holistically through all of the different pros and cons, and uh I don't think we have any other choice.
Thank you, council member. Um, council member here.
Um, I'll I'll be brief. Because I have a good sense of where this is all going. I tried in the last meeting, well, first of all, I want to make a comment about that statue. That statue's not Don Quixote. It's Quixote. It's a it's a serpentine streak. Um, and that's a very different personality, and fortunately, it's gone, and we helped get rid of it. So I just want to make that clear. And I also just wanted to address the city attorney's comments about about the findings and what we would have to do in order to uh support a denial based upon the record of this project. Um, I have not had the time or the capacity over the last couple of weeks to thoroughly review the record to find all of the evidence that would be in there to support uh denial of the project based upon our our local laws. But I firmly believe that that evidence exists. And if that issue were to be litigated, I actually believe we would be in a good position to defend ourselves on that issue. And the other point I want to make, like, is along those lines. Um, I started off my personal involvement in Larkspur City Government a little more than ten years ago on the Planning Commission before joining the City Council. Um, and one of the reasons that I did that is because I I like local land use law, and I'm a firm believer in local control. Um, and that was really one of the reasons that I got involved with uh city government and why I have stayed involved with city government. And I am frankly horrified that those motivations are being stripped from me in this process. I understand all of the arguments about litigation risk. Um, they're valid arguments. Um, and I appreciate that my city council members are likely to be persuaded by those arguments, and I don't blame them for that. Um, that said, um, uh, as I said in the last meeting, I do not feel uh that I can, as a uh as a matter of morality, quite honestly, um, vote to support this project. Um, and when we come to a vote tonight, I will not do that. Uh, I will not vote to to do either either way. Um, I don't feel at this point, given uh everything that's gone on with this process, uh, that uh it's really would serve any of would serve any objective to stand in the way of this project, but I won't support it. I can't support it. It's inappropriate for this community. It will lead us down a path of transforming the character of this community into an urban landscape that I didn't move here to see. And I don't think most of the people in this room moved here to see. So I will, when we come to a vote, I will be refraining from making a vote. It will be abstaining.
Thank you, council member. All right. So I'll, I'll just add a few thoughts and then I'm very eager to hear from the public again. So I, I've worked this year and last year as hard as I could on housing. I was on the housing, housing element steering committee for a year and there were lots of meetings and very technical. I kind of had three goals, you know, inside all of the nitty gritty detail. I thought, what does Larkspur need? You know, if we're submitting a housing element for 2023 to 2031, an eight-year arena cycle where we're being asked to build 979 units. What do I want to see for this community? And it kind of boiled down to three things. One was that we would not have zoning like Houston, Texas, you know, where a small house is next to an eight story. So we wouldn't have, I called them Frankensteins or monstrosities. The second was that we would pay special attention and preserve the downtown. This is a historic district. It's part of the charm, the attraction, the beauty, why people move here, what feels like community. All 11 cities in Marin have this identity and it's near and dear to us. And the third was that we really have meaningful affordable housing, meaningful. And I believe that means that, you know, most of us in this room have kids or some of us are working and starting off and trying to make it. It's really, really hard to make it when the housing costs are what they are. And whether that means we need more inventory or whatever. And, and next week, on Monday, we start talking about rent control in this very room and it's a little bit of a different framing. Now, the, the problem is the rents are sky high because there just is not enough vacancy, which is there's not enough inventory. So again, housing is near and dear to my heart. And as a matter of fact, I went to North Magnolia because that was one of the nine identified areas in the housing element. And I did an email blast. Maybe some of you got it. Some of you didn't. And guess what? Two people showed up and walked up and down past Rustic Bakery and the Masonic Temple with me. Because I, I think it was something people didn't get until something was in their face. And so I, I also feel this project is not one that I like. It's really, you know, I, I've worked with, you know, Brock was on this committee too. He was part and you've seen him fight hard and push back. And I think the city has been fighting for you. I think the planning commission has been fighting. They've been getting concessions. I think that, you know, our staff tried to get economic analysis. But the question, I think it really boils down to two things. One is can that height and to a lesser extent, can that parking be a, is a waiver, which can we deny it? Or can we condition it even further? And the second big question is, is this project really not feasible? You know, if you remove those waivers and I, I was willing to give up 20 to 40 hours of my time, you know, with two kids and, you know, full-time job to really pursue this. And I've done my best and walked down the legal alleys with the attorneys. I mentioned I didn't go to the applicant or the appellant. I've really been trying to do my homework. And I also am coming to where some of the other council members are. I think the risk return analysis and you know what this city needs. We have 12,000 people. And our community survey is asking for a lot of things which, you know, we, we, I don't know what funds we can tie up. And then I also started seeing, you know, online, I think there was a lot of email blasts and people from outside of our community. But I have, you know, had in my office hours, people coming and supporting this project. So I would say my count, you know, as, as a council member is about one in three have supported this project versus, you know, the ones who, who are very much against it. So the last point I want to make is I really went through in my due diligence period between the last meeting and this and tried to look at the different appellants, you know, arguments. So Pat Hegan's, you know, Ipsy Dixit argument, it's like, look, you know, there's nothing there. Do it because I say so. I, I, I did not, I could not come to that finding. I, I think that we know that the project started as three stories. That's in the public record. Then there was a utility easement in a setback which pushed it back. And then it got bumped up not to four stories, but a higher 38 foot with the, or I forget the exact number, but, but a higher number with the mezzanines. And so there's, there's not a complete like, I do what I want and you just have to accept it. There's, there's a clear economic understanding that if you lose your setback and lose volume, you may have to go up in height. If you have 25 units, you have to go to 20, maybe something has to give. I don't say that's convincing, but that's one argument. Then we actually had the report and the city wasn't satisfied. So we hired Libby Seefel. And she went independently, not on either side, and validated that this project, under the conditions of the financing, whatever the rate of return is, we don't know, is, is going to require this to be feasible. And if we try to redesign it, we will render it unfeasible. And to me, that's not Ipsy Dixit. To me, that is not pro forma. I, I guess if we all had the pro forma in front of us, it would be a different conversation, but it's not like we've had nothing. So, so that was my thoughts about Pat's argument. I'm willing to hear more public comment. That's why we're here tonight. Just want to give you my thoughts. On Julia's arguments, you know, there are many and I'm not going to go over everyone. I'll be done in less than a minute. But Julia, you know, was mentioning as a biker and I appreciate that. I'm a biker. I bike 40 miles a week. I have my kid on the back. I go up and down Magnolia all the time. And to have that parallel parking situation being doored, I'm well aware of what that is. But guess what? That exists right in, right, right here within three or four blocks. We have that. So to me, is that something that raises to the threshold of, you know, public safety that can't be mitigated? I don't know. I'm willing to hear more, but, but that, that was not a strong argument to me. Elizabeth Breckus's argument, I went through all six points. They've all been, they're in the public record. Look at tonight's report on pages. The 11 pages, the six points, I thought they were answered fairly clearly. And I invite the public to read those closely and not to conflate public opinion with evidence. And from that, I, I could not make those findings on, on that side, on the appellate side. So with that, I feel it's not just that our hands are tied. We've really thought about this. And I'm here to think about this some more tonight, but I just want you to know that as an impartial person, I, I, again, I'm on the housing element committee. I don't like what I see there. I hear you all loud and clear and that's my own opinion. But as a council member, I'm looking at the legal, the architectural, the economic, the financial and the community, and that's where I'm landing. So those are my comments. And with that, I guess we're ready for public comment. If anyone in the chamber would like to come up, please state your name and where you live.
My name is Pat Hagan. I live at 601 College Avenue. Which is immediately next door to Larkspur. I would point out that I have the benefit of not being able to pull out of my driveway. Not be able to pull out of my driveway from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM and sometimes earlier than that every school day. I have three and a half minutes, by the way, left from the other day that I didn't use.
Nine minutes and I don't want to cut you off. So please time yourself.
I don't want to be cut off either. So look, what I'm going to move to is the traffic is a real problem. You've got bike lanes right now where this project's going to go. The moment you all authorize those bike lanes to be removed, you are in a world of hurting if somebody gets seriously injured in that spot. And when I say seriously injured, you know who the walk-up firm is? Do you know who the catchet firm is? These are people that will sue you for millions upon millions of dollars if somebody gets seriously injured there. And I know wherefrom I talk because I've dealt with those firms for 40 years. Okay. So I know it sounds like a lot of attorney's fees, but if you haven't got the insurance to cover that, and you may not. And the developers don't cover it because they go away and after a certain amount of time, they don't have any liability. Then the city gets it. Your insurers may or may not get it. And you know who gets it after that? All the people who made the decision because you can be personally liable too. Because you're, you're exercising your discretion and you may be exercising it wrongly. And by the way, abstaining, Mr. Harf doesn't necessarily excuse you. The next question I have for you is what happens?
So you have, you have 10 seconds. So please wrap it up.
What happens next? Does this corridor go all the way down north Larkspur? Okay. And lastly, how is the letter from the banker saying it's not done, not NFC Dixit?
Great. Thank you.
Can I get to anybody else?
Can I ask staff a question?
Okay.
Want to ask about the bikes?
All right. Like I said, you know, you said there's no Epsy Dixits, but there are. And the bigger thing is you sit here and you talk about the state taking over your role. And when the state takes over your role, who are they seeding your power to? They're not making this decision to go forward. They're seeding, put your timer on. They're seeding. They're seeding your power to the developers. I'm not saying they're bad people. And the appellants aren't saying they don't want housing. That's the other thing. It's this is not a NIMBY thing. All the appellants are saying is three stories. What I'm calling on is I'm calling for everybody. That's for the city council and the developers to do the right thing here. So that if you start going down that corridor, it doesn't end up this three, this is three and a half stories or four stories, the next one, five stories. The next one, six stories. And by the way, and then what happens when they come for you? Oh, that's, that's a different era, right? When they come for you next, your downtown's gone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Patrick. Councilmember.
I have a question for staff. Could, could you, I, I've heard the comment about bike lanes before, but when I went by the property, there is no class one bike lane. It's like Magnolia where people, where bikes ride in the street. But can you just clarify for, to make sure that I know, because the
Julian, can you come on? He's, he's on. May I bring Julian on?
These guys hand up now.
Just where they are.
This is Julian Skinner, the Public Works Director.
Yes. Good evening. So there are class, what are referred to as class two bike lanes on that segment of Magnolia that extend both to the south and the north of this segment. A class one bike path is typically not joined to the street. It's a separate eight to 10 foot wide pathway dedicated for bicycles and pedestrians. What we have in front of this project is a class two bike lane. It's a Caltrans standard bike lane. In this case, it's five feet wide. And in this location and the, the project is not proposing to remove the, the bike lane from Magnolia.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other clarifications? And also tonight, as we will continue with public comment, I might just ask, you know, I appreciate your, your comments, Pat. Maybe staff can, you know, comment on some of, if there's anything to say, you know, there were a few claims made there and it may require some clarification.
City manager and I were just agreeing on exactly the same points, which is to pick up on one of the points that the Public Works Director just made that if the project's approved and the, the configuration of parking and bike lanes is altered on Magnolia, that will be done to a Caltrans standard. If built to a Caltrans standard, the city will have design immunity under California law from any litigation related to any injury that might occur unless the individual can overcome that immunity by showing that there was. And this is a very technical term, not a generally, not, I, I don't want to, I don't, I'm going to use a term that has a specific technical meaning, but might be misunderstood as sort of a general idea. But someone would have to show that there was a dangerous condition and the city was aware of that to overcome the design immunity. Additionally, for something like a personal injury case where you approved some bike lanes and parking to a Caltrans standard, you would not be individually liable. And additionally, the, the, the city's insurance would basically provide a defense and pay any liability on your behalf if there were, but there really isn't any viable theory for something like that.
Okay. Appreciate it. Um, next public comment.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Becker and I live in Marin County. I moved to Larkspur originally in 1991. So I've lived in this area a very long time. I would like to give voice to about the one third of people who wrote letters in support of this project. I know that I read through all 45 of them that were posted. And it seemed like what you said, as people came into your office, there are people in the community that do support this project. I know it's not ideal. I know it's different and change is hard. But I'm the voice of people who can afford to buy in Marin. And this is an opportunity for those of us who can't otherwise afford to buy, to have a shot at a lottery for four affordable housing units. And I think that you are doing a great service for the community by pushing this forward and not only because of the legal situation, but because I really think with the situation of lack of housing, it's the right thing to do. So I support what I hope will be your vote to push this forward. And I also want to comment about the biking because I'm an avid biker and I ride up and down Magnolia at least three or four times a week. And there's a lot of parallel parking already on Magnolia. And this would be very close to where that already exists. So I personally don't think that's going to be at any danger to that bike route. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Sandra. Next comment, please.
I, Ed Sartie, I live in Murray Park, right adjacent to the proposed project. I walk, ride, drive, walk my dog, and feed my kids and, and, and wife every day on that road. Estelle and Magnolia. And to hear you say, and I'm not against public housing, I'm, I are affordable housing. I'm not against housing. In fact, I think housing should be there. But to hear each of you say in your own way that you find this objectionable and yet are going to vote for it, it feels like you're tilting towards us, your constituents and our rights. I get the fiduciary duty. I understand that. Well, yeah, the whole other slate of things to say, but I'm really astonished that I'm hearing you say you don't like this project and yet you're going to vote for it or refrain. Councilman Harof, please don't refrain. Please vote against it, if that's what you would. Um, there are many aspects of this project that are troubles.
And the previous speakers to heart. So we'll, we'll see how I vote.
There are many aspects, parking. I just want to address there's, there's a, a, an email that was sent by, and I'm not sure if she's here, Elise Simonian, on March 1st to Kevin Lee or Jeff Lee of Kenwood Woodlands Property Association. Regarding parking, she says, we agree that the project has inadequate parking. I do apologize that this will result in impacts the neighbors. Where are the people going to park that aren't going to be able to park their three and four units? There's not, uh, uh, room units. There's not going to be enough parking. Where are they going to park? They're going to park in my neighborhood. It's already tricky to drive in my neighborhood. It's unsafe. There's close calls that happen all the time to me, to others. I see them. Please be brave. Reject this project.
Thank you.
Be brave.
Thank you for your comments. Next public speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Cady Ozirpily. I live at 79 Cedar Avenue. I've grown up in Marin County, lived in South Slido Mill Valley and raised my family here in Larkspur. And the way we work in, in all of those communities, if the neighbors have problems, we sit down, we talk with the neighbors, we go through a process. We don't get bullied into something. I feel like you all are getting bullied into this. Be brave. Scott Candell, be brave. Kevin Harof, vote your conscience. Mayor Paulson, you know, you're doing the wrong thing by approving this. Don't approve it. We don't want you to approve it. We are your constituents. We have spoken loud and clear. Do the right thing. We have spoken loud and clear. Do the right thing. Don't approve this. You have five shots to to send it back. Send it back all five times. Maybe we'll get more concessions. Maybe we'll get rid of the ridiculous rooftop. Have you done a noise study? Are they going to put hot tubs up there? Is there going to be tiki bars up there? Is there going to be lighting that's going to affect their neighbors? This is essentially a taking from those people on college court that are going to have a tower peering down in their backyards. What would you do if that was your house? If that was your son or daughter jumping on a trampoline that all of a sudden people were peering down on from a roof deck? That does not need to be there. Would you let your constituents put a roof deck on their homes? No. Why are you letting these developers put it on theirs? Do the right thing here. Be brave. Come on. That's why we elected you to represent us, not them. Us. We are telling you, vote no. It's simple. Send it back to planning. Try and get more concessions. Get rid of the roof deck. I don't know if you can get rid of the four story. But do what you can. Don't just roll over. I don't know what this city attorney is talking about. He seems to find every reason to support the developers. But not his constituents here that are paying his bills. Let's do the right thing. Slow this down. Send it back to planning. See what more we can get out of them to stop this horrible, ugly precedent that will be on your watch if you approve this. Please don't do this. I'm imploring you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Okay, uh, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Eric Adama. Um, I live in the Larkspur Marina. I I spoke last time, there was talk of getting. A, they were going to provide uh, financial analysis. I don't know if they did so. I haven't heard any or seen anything of that of the record.
Yeah, we'll get to that. Go ahead and do your comment and we'll ask.
And then secondly, you, I think the commission was was going to do their own an- analysis. I don't, I know you referenced a third party one. I don't know if that's the same. But I think you were going to do one. The point is, this is crazy. There's, you know, there's no stringent financial analysis to justify whether or not. Uh, the fourth floor is required, other than the developer simply saying it's required and that's how it should be. Everyone in this room is saying that they're willing to go along with the project, that affordable housing is is a good thing. There's only a couple of units. I mean, let's be realistic about it. But um, the, you know, all we're asking for is just a reasonable plan here. I know, I know that the planning commission felt bullied by Attorney Woodruff and they felt that they had to approve that that evening. It's really unfortunate, but they didn't know any better and walked into this and it becomes a very legalistic thing. As everyone stated, there's you you're, you know, you have five meetings to take this on. Spend the time, like do the financial analysis. Send it back to planning. Get some, you know, some modifications that the community can get behind. I would think the developer will want that for their own reputation. This just doesn't make any sense. You guys are all saying that you don't approve that what conceptually what's going on here, do the right thing. And the the cost of a lawsuit, so what? You know, compared to the taxes that we pay in this community, it it's it's a rounding error. And the fact is, you know, this may be the thing that gets the law amended or changed to a way that's reasonable for communities like Larkspur. Again, please do the right thing, folks. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you for your comment. So, yeah.
Can I just, you know, I I really think that we have five extraordinary residents who have volunteered to be on our planning commission. Who really do do their due diligence and I I really would like to say I respect their work that they do. And I think it's very important that um, I I just want to make sure that we know that it's a very important role that they play in this community. And I believe that they take their work very seriously. So I I I was a little offended by your implication that they are not doing their work seriously. So.
To, if I could clarify, I'm not suggesting they're not doing their work diligently. I am stating that they felt bullied by the city attorney because they felt that they had no choice at the end of the evening. They did not want this project. They put up a number of amendments that weren't honored.
Well, that they're not here to talk about that, so I just want to make sure that it's known that that is um, a very important role here and they take their work very seriously. And then to close with that.
For this legal.
I want to get into that because they're not here to to discuss it. And then for the comment about being brave, please step forward and do. Volunteer for Planning Commission. I mean, these are really important roles in this community and they get to make a lot of fundamental decisions and. Um, step forward and 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 help when you get a chance to do that. So there will be openings for planning. There'll be openings for this role too. In the next year or so, so step forward and and help us make these decisions. So.
And I will say, through the 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 last two public hearings that I've been at, I I I think it's a very thoughtful, intelligent council that's in front of us. And uh, you guys are certainly capable of making the right choices and and I know you mean well by the community. So thank you.
Let me, I I go ahead, do you want to carry on?
Yes, I I just want to address a comment to 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 the mayor. This is a public comment time. Um, and I think it's not a time for us to have a dialogue. We're in a hearing. You're entitled to your public comment. I don't think we're need, we're in a position to really argue with you one way or the other. We have a lot of people who want to speak tonight. And this is actually not for you. This is for my fellow council members. I don't think we need to engage in a debate. We want to hear from you.
Under- understood, was just replying.
Um, yes, thank you for your comment and then if this is clarification.
I I just want to point out there, um, while we're interested in public comment, I am not interested in people ragging on our staff. Okay, uh, our our city attorney is our expert. Okay, we, some of us may be lawyers. Okay, this is not our specialty. Some of us are not lawyers. If there is a legal question. This is somebody who we are asking their opinion for and we respect their opinion. We have hired him to give us his opinion. Okay, and I don't want anybody sitting here, you know, saying that he's not bullying anybody. He's answering questions that we pose to him because this is his expertise and it is not our expertise. Okay, so if if you have something you want to say, I'm I'm very happy to hear everybody's opinions about the project. I I don't want people putting down our staff. Okay, that's not what this is about. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure it was clear for the record that the Planning Commission's final action included a number of conditions of approval. Uh, modifying the project that are reflected in the action in front of you tonight, just in case there was any ambiguity about that.
Thank you, thank you for that. And um, as a point of order, I I appreciate uh, Councilmember Cantal and Haroff and that. Um, I I know they're high emotions tonight, but do realize that we're here to listen. We're here to be thoughtful and it helps if you keep the comments constructive. And and I do think that um, you know, we all have the evidence in front of us and we're going to continue talking. So next public comment, please.
Hello, uh, thank you all for your time up there. I know this is a difficult decision. I'm Chad Salter. I live at One Murray Lane. Uh, we bought that property about six, seven years ago. It was a flat piece of land. Before that, a couple of years prior. The owner of the property wanted to build an eight to eleven unit property on there and enter through Estelle. It's it's seventy five feet away from this proposed project. Um, the city deemed it unsafe to enter through there. And let's fast forward, people have talked about it, you know, ten years later. Uh, there's Rustic Bakery, got to be one of probably the busiest eateries around and certainly in Larkspur. Uh, from eight to eleven o'clock every day, traffic up and down Magnolia. I'm a little surprised. And I totally get the legal aspects of this. I I've been doing a lot of work on this as well. Um, I'm a little surprised you're not pushing it back on public safety. And I don't know why, um, I think this is the opportunity right now. You already denied a project seventy five feet away for public's health and safety ten years ago. This is, I mean, we're, this is now where we have Rustic Bakery, we have no parking. We have a four story building, again, not against development. Think you guys are doing a. A nice job, but I think it needs to be a little smaller. Um, but I would push it back at least and try to see how we could. Um, you know, I don't think it needs to be approved today. I think you need to push it back and uh, take a a real look at public health and safety.
Great, thank you, Chad. Okay, next comment, please.
I'm Harry Giacoto and I've lived in Murray Park since nineteen seventy six and my neighbor wrote up something.
Can I ask you to pull the mic because then they can't hear you online if they don't talk to them.
I've heard you, Kodo, and I've lived in Murray Park for since nineteen seventy six. And my neighbor wrote up something that I don't know if you got.
Actually, no, you can just keep it there.
And this is something that she wrote up and I thought it was so good that I took it around the neighborhood. It within just a few minutes, I got signatures from quite a few neighbors and it has to do with the last person said, public safety. The safety of the bikers and I know Julian, I think it's Julian, said that it's a class two bike route. We've waited, I've waited for a long time to have a bike area where I can be on. And I don't want to be on a bike path now that the city, and she has a good write up for the planning commission with what you, we just spent. Taxpayer dollars on through our twenty five percent tax increase to make the road safer. And I think you did a great job. That's what she has in this matter. Now you did a great job into uh. Designing the the new road on Magnolia. So now you're going to chance taking a bike lane and having car doors open. So the issue that she has is a safety issue. Going along even on ten foot, when you have to worry about doors opening on you, it changes everything. So please consider the safety issue if you're going to do anything to changing Magnolia Avenue in its current form. And we're going to be taking our taxpayer dollars to change it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kirk. Uh, next speaker, please.
Hello, Kirk Bergstrom, sixty five Francis, a couple of blocks away from the proposed project. When I left the city council meeting a couple of weeks ago, I was really encouraged by the thoughtfulness of your questions. Um, you know, I raised the question about litigation and why that might be important. You asked the city attorney. To ballpark the cost and if I remember correctly, it was a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how it's inflated since that time. I agree with what the other speakers have said. This is a time to be brave and it's a time to ensure. As the city attorney said, that we are operating on substantial evidence. And my constructive uh. Suggestions for this evening are that we don't have substantial evidence yet. And I think there are three areas where the city council can request that there's more fact finding and more study. The first is around financial viability as a real estate project. Um, we have a black box. The fact that the developer is unwilling to share information should be a real tell. We have plenty of very qualified real estate professionals that I know would be happy to form an impartial independent panel. And provide advice to the city about financial viability, because that is a linchpin issue here, right? Um, this started off as a smaller project. Now, you know, it's it's gotten bigger. We've heard that two units want to be added, so it's a very fluid thing still in terms of of financial viability. That's one. Two, uh, I think is around public safety, traffic and parking and looking in that holistically.
Um, Kirk, you've got a few seconds, maybe just go quick.
So that study, I think, needs to be done independently again and um. You know, finally, what everyone else has talked about in terms of 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 height and mass, um, you know, I think there are ways to proceed. With a three story development. So what I'm asking.
Hey, thanks Kirk, we got in now.
So I'm asking for more steady and to deny this application tonight. Be brave.
Okay, thank you, Kirk. Okay, great. Um, next speaker, please.
Good evening. Sam Andre, I'm one of the constituents who wrote a letter in support of the development. It seems like I'm in the minority here. Uh, I've grown up here. I went to whole middle school. Now I'm going to be graduating Redwood this year. Um. Anyways, so in five or ten years, maybe I'll probably be looking to buy a home of my own and same with all my peers. And I think it would be great if you guys could approve this development because we need greater supply of housing, like Mr. Paulson, I think you mentioned. Uh, we need more inventory of housing to bring down housing prices. Uh, that would really benefit young people like myself. Another sad thing that I've noticed going to school here, uh, we have, we're really fortunate to have really excellent teachers here, but. I don't think any of my teachers live nearby. All of my teachers live in San Rafael or Nevada, or even in the East Bay or in Sonoma. Uh, and I think that's honestly kind of shameful. Uh, we, our teachers should be able to live here as with our firefighters, police officers. And the rest of our public servants, we should enable them to be able to afford housing here. And I think uh, this development is a step in the right direction. Um, desert development also has other benefits, uh, environmental and fiscal as well. It'll produce more tax revenue for the city, which I I'm sure you're all aware of and. Um, desert development's also better for the environment because enables more people to live close to shops and uh. And thus enables them to bike places and walk places and use their car slots. Anyway, so I'd just like to voice the support of the minority and it seems like you guys are all reluctant in approving this development. But maybe have a little more enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, next comment, please.
Good evening, Stephanie Andre, one twenty one Sikor Avenue, um, in Larkspur. Um, I am a former investment banker, a real estate investment banker, and I was a treasurer for a public REIT, a multifamily REIT. So this is sort of housing is very near and dear to my heart and also something that I did professionally for about twenty years. Um, I will say that, you know, the financial um, returns that the developer is looking for. I mean, we have to make sure that people can actually, I mean, they're not doing this at for charity. So, you know, we need to be able to balance different. Um, different people's needs. And so, you know, I I applaud the uh, committee or the council for going out and getting a third party. Um, study on the financial returns of this project, but I I'd just like to remind people that, you know, interest rates are rising. People do um, need to be, developers need to be able to make um, profits off of these um, off of these projects. Um, I support the Magnolia Village uh, Development as presented and previously approved by city council. I think Larkspur and Marin County by extension is in dire need of more housing. This project will drastically improve what is currently there, which is an underutilized ISO. And redevelop the land to provide new greener and improved housing and retail for residents. People who go, students who go to attend comm and others who frequent the area. I am a proponent of providing more housing to increase the diversity within our community. Single family zoning laws have historically been a way to create and preserve economic and social segregation in communities. Low density neighborhoods have created a shortage of housing, which has made housing unaffordable for people with normal paying jobs. Such as educators, social workers, tradespeople, shop owners or restaurateurs. Are we so elitist to think that the people who cook our food, educate our children, take care of our seniors and fix our homes do not deserve to live in our community? We need to build slightly higher.
Five seconds, if you can.
Need to build slightly higher density housing so that more people can live closer to where they work. I believe that greater social, economic and racial diversity in our neighborhoods will enrich our communities.
Stephanie, thank you so much for your comment. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Good evening, uh, Armin Bengal, living in Murray Park. Um, I echo the comments that Mr. Sardi made about this traffic patterns, overall safety around uh, the Estelle corridor in particular. Um, I'm very supportive of the uh, objectives of the project in terms of affordable housing. Um, and I I would look at it from the perspective of uh, some of the comments that have already been made here about the opacity of some of the financial projections. So I think we need to open up. I'd ask for delay to take, be able to take a look in more detail at some of those financial projections. Um, and how, you know, whatever uh, rates of return were required to understand if we could actually modify that fourth floor. What other alternatives there are. Uh, there are a lot of different permutations that go into the assumptions and we'd just like to be able to see that. Uh, those have been adequately addressed.
Great, thank you for your comment, Armin. Uh, next speaker, please.
Of the council. My name is Julia Vileich. I am the next door neighbor to the project at eleven seventy seven Magnolia. I'll give you my resume, I think I did in the last uh, call. I want to make very clear that none of us are asking you to deny the project. We are asking you to push for modifications to the project. We all know we need affordable housing, although this truly is not affordable housing. Unfortunately, there will be no teachers, they're gone. But there will be teachers, firemen, educators and social workers living there because they won't be able to afford that. But we also need more information. I um, I've looked at the plans a thousand times. If you, if they really want their fourth floor, then they should make all four floors nine feet tall. There was a memo produced by Elise in February. Coming up with several properties that got over a thousand dollars a square foot that had nine foot ceilings. It's in the packet, it's right there for you all. If they did nine foot ceilings times four, times four floors. It would be a much lower building. The other thing is with pa- parking and traffic, I'm. The other thing is with parking and traffic, I'm obviously very concerned about that. The fact of the matter is that there will be at least sixty additional vehicles. When you think about, if it's even two cars per unit, which we know there will be way more than that. Then you think about the Amazon trucks, the people coming deliveries, the guests. All of those people are going to go egress and ingress through one exit, or there is one entrance on the other side by, um, by rustic. But they're going to go in and out. That's going to be over three hundred new trips across that bike path. It's, it's going to be a reality. And I'm sorry that you don't think there will be any liability. Maybe there won't be financial liability, but you will have an injury potentially of a child or an adult on your hands.
Great. Thank you, Julia. Uh, next speaker, please.
My name is Christopher Gaylord and I live in Kentfield. I've lived in five Bay Area community counties in the last forty five years and in Kentfield for the last thirteen years. And I would echo these comments that many others have said. There is no cost for you to stop this process now and evaluate more understanding of the financial impacts and specifically the traffic study that was commissioned by the applicant developer. It was, was not independent. So if you want an independent traffic study, and if you read the study carefully, you'll see that they assumed that the entire development was already full, the existing commercial space was already full. And, uh, you would be advised, or I'd suggest that you look at that traffic study carefully. The reality is there is not enough parking. There is not enough, uh, traffic management in that area and you will have illegal parking, you'll have illegal, uh, traffic maneuvers. And it's, uh, it's creating a dangerous situation. So when you think about safety, you think about the financial implications and the developers have given you zero financial evidence to tell you that the development in a smaller way would actually benefit you. So I'm strongly recommending you, you not approve the, the, uh, the project as it stands. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Christopher. Uh, next comment, please. And we'll come back if people are wanting to ruminate a little bit, we'll do zoom and come back to the chamber. Oh, we got to take her.
My name's Kim Gaylord. I'm a resident here in Marin County. I live in Kentfield. And I believe, you know, we're a very important neighbor to this project in particular, but you know, what really concerns me, yes, this project and the scope of this project and what it's the involvement is, this is our first example of what's to come. And you guys, I really hope set some standards and not just roll over on this one because for example, I, I don't know what's going to come of the Lucky supermarket area and other projects down the road. And I just hope there is a more thoughtful process to this housing and growth. Yes, absolutely. We need more lower income housing. But this project in particular, you know, the units that are going to be low income. I mean, what are they going to be? Two million dollars? I mean, that's not going to help a teacher. I, I'm only guessing. We don't have any numbers. We have no idea. I'm speculating, which maybe you guys are still, but anyway, please use this as an example, like for Marin County. I mean, I think this project has received enough press that it's important to be stronger about it and not just, it, it really does feel like you're giving in. So, so I don't know, I feel like you sort of have your mindset on this, but be thoughtful going forward, especially to help other Marin County, uh, neighboring projects going forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kim.
Hello, I'm Michael Rex, architect. Been practicing, um, architectural design in Marin for forty years and I'm representing the Magnolia neighbors uh, for safe and smart development. And I'm speaking on their behalf in support of the appeal. I urge you to delete the fourth story. The applicant has provided no credible evidence, uh, that it's essential uh, for the project to be economically viable. And they are not, those recreation rooms on the top floor, that's all they are, are not providing any additional housing. So there's no real benefit to the community. Just saying it so doesn't make it so. Hearing the legal advice, uh, tonight and, and in the record, I get a sense that you're being told you have to approve anything the developer asks or you're going to get sued. That's not necessarily true. You shouldn't give up that soon. Uh, I have five recommendations. Don't deny the project. We need housing. That's a good site for it. It's underdeveloped. You're right. It's close to services. Uh, although I think just two of low income units are not enough to even call it affordable housing. Uh, keep, uh, uh, keep the small two commercial uses on the ends. It provides vitality. It's consistent with the zoning district. It's a commercial zoning district and it would provide some resident serving uses. I, um, recommend.
You've stopped thirty seconds.
Oh, I have thirty seconds?
Yeah.
Uh, continue the hearing. Ask the developer to make some suggestions about how to respond meaningful to your concerns and all the concerns of so many people you've been hearing from. I've submitted a letter, um, dated May second that provides many ideas. I personally met with the architects a month ago and they offered me nothing. In fact, they never responded. You need to ask.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks for your comment. Okay.
Oh, thank you. I asked that you require the applicant to submit a full financial performa to prove the necessity for the concessions and waivers under density bonus. And I asked that you have that performa vetted by an independent accounting firm and that that analysis include paying a lower price for the land. Land's a big cost here and they're probably overpaying. Uh, and, uh, last, I asked that you direct staff to develop the findings and evidence to support denying, uh, that fourth level. Please consider those recommendations. Please consider continuing the hearing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Okay, next speaker. Okay, like we have a hiatus in the room. We can come back. Allison, who do we have on Zoom?
Will be Bob Pendley.
Welcome, Bob.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, I'm speaking for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. We're advocates for projects and policies that advance affordable housing, environmental integrity and social justice. And we strongly urge that you uphold the planning commission's decision. Apart from, um, all the legal considerations that the city attorney has correctly shared with you. And that's because Magnolia Village is an excellent opportunity for, to provide badly needed homeownership opportunities. But it, it's especially unusual and that it provides, uh, provides a homeownership opportunities for lower income households, which almost never happens in Marin County or actually any place in, um, California. We recognize that many in the community have raised complaints about the height of the project. But in, in California, affordable housing, most affordable housing gets built as inclusionary housing. In other words, um, the market rate, the market rate units help to support the affordable units. Um, and to make that possible in, uh, in places where land is so expensive and just and the availability is so limited, you need height. So we believe that it's time for Marin to embrace, um, height in its housing development. It's the only way we can both produce affordable, how, the affordable housing we need and protect the open spaces, the defining feature of Marin. And finally, um, we really appreciate, uh, council member Ray's comments. As she rightly points out, um, you have actually hundreds of units at four, five and six stories. They're important and valuable parts of the community. Thank you for your time tonight.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Uh, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Carmella Davis.
Welcome, Carmella.
Hello, uh, my name is Carmella Davis. I grew up here in Marin. I went to Anna McGuire Mill Valley Middle School and Tam High. I'm recently a college graduate. Um, and I would echo Bob and Sam and say that I'd like to see Marin building more housing so that one day I can hopefully move back. As of right now, there's no affordable housing for someone in my similar position. And same goes for teachers and public servants who work here in Marin. I think that this project is a good one. It minimizes the environmental impacts because it's already using a developed property. It wouldn't require new infrastructure. The design is moderate density and the height is not something that I think, uh, I don't know, people have pointed that out, but like Bob said, there is already existing four story or more level units here in Larkspur. So I don't fully understand that. I think the look and feel of the city is about the people and the environment. It's not about if there's one building with four levels. Um, and I think that this project would help increase housing in Marin and it would help diversify our community. So I'm in support of it and I thank you for my time.
Great. You have a minute left, but thank you, Carmella. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Alex Torres.
Welcome, Alice.
Oh, Alex. Yes, Alex. Thanks, Mr. Mr. Marin, members of the council. Alex Torres here, Director of State Government Relations for the Bay Area Council. On behalf of our over three hundred employer members in the nine county Bay Area, excited to call in today from Sacramento and express our support for Magnolia Village. As some of the previous speakers, uh, emphasized, uh, we support the, the Magnolia Village project because we do need more housing and commercial projects in our communities. They're close together, uh, to reduce housing costs, commute costs, congestion and emissions. Uh, I'll echo the points made by a previous speaker on the inclusionary piece. You have twenty percent of these units, these townhomes, uh, as affordable. I also want to touch, uh, earlier in the, in the agenda, there was some discussion on the financial conditions, uh, or the economic conditions that the state is experiencing, a general fund deficit. You know, we are facing a, a budget deficit. Why? Because, uh, unfortunately companies have left our state and most notably the Bay Area. And some of the concerns, uh, you know, the council expressed are, are points well taken. Many companies are doing strategic assessments on whether to keep Bay Area presence. And a major factor in that is housing. So, you know, I, I urge your support of the project here today to add to the region's housing supply, to add to that supply of affordable housing for the benefit, uh, of, of not only the, the, the city's general fund, the state's general fund, uh, and our own, our, our state's economic vitality, but also the commenters in your community who express the need for more affordable housing. So again, urge your support, uh, here today. Proud to be here and support from the Bay Area Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Uh, next comment, please.
Next speaker is Jeff Lay.
Welcome, Jeff.
Hi there, uh, Jeff Lay. I'm a Kentfield resident. I'm also the president of the Kent Woodlands Homeowners Association. You know, we're not taking a formal stance on this, uh, topic, but we've heard from a countless number of, of the, um, over thousand residents that we have in the woodlands who have voiced, uh, really specific concerns over safety and over parking, uh, specifically on College Avenue. You know, in listening tonight, it, it feels like, uh, there's a lot of unanswered questions. And I think the biggest concern that we have is just kind of the concept of setting a precedent, um, that if this is approved in meeting number two or three, without having all the answers and really exploring all of the, um, options that you can take. It could really further impact the, um, parking, traffic and safety concerns. So really urge you to, to reach deep, um, as elected members. Your job is to represent the constituents, many of whom are speaking tonight. And so I hope that your personal opinions can be, um, balanced with, with that of, of, you know, the overwhelming amount of people who are speaking up. Love the guy from Sacramento and his opinion. Love the out of town developer, but this is really a local issue and we should treat it as such. So thank you for your time spent on this.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, next comment, please.
Next speaker is Tamsin McCracken Harris.
Welcome, Hanson.
Hi, this is Tamsin McCracken. I live on Francis Avenue, which is the closest street pretty much to this development, other than maybe.
Hanson, we can't hear you very well. Maybe, maybe you can speak closer or oh, Tamsin, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
Okay.
I'll start over.
Sorry. I live on Francis Avenue, uh, which is one of the closest streets to this development. Um, in addition to the height, which I have a big problem with and the safety issues of around transportation and getting in and out of this project and traffic. My biggest issue is parking. I've got twelve apartment units across the street from me already. And they're all lovely people, but they all park here on this street. If we're going to add rustic parking and bank parking to Francis Avenue, I'm going to have a big problem. And I don't think parking is being addressed at all in this project. And from what I've read anyway, I believe you do have an opportunity to require that parking be resolved, given that one of these lots is a commercial lot. Not a residential lot. And we have nothing against the development of housing. And reducing this to three stories instead of four doesn't reduce the amount of housing here. So, but, but my biggest issue again is parking. Please deal with parking.
Great. Thank you for your comment. Uh, next comment, please.
Next speaker is Hillary Newsom.
Uh, welcome, Hillary.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Hillary Newsom and I live on College Avenue. And I'll be very brief. I want to start by thanking all of you for uh, your hard work and, and your effort on behalf of all of us in the community. I too am very concerned about, um, the height of this project. And I'm a big supporter of development. I'm a big supporter of, um, affordability, affordable units. I'm concerned about the transparency on the financials and the reality of whether or not this really truly is the affordable, um, affordable housing. I'm, I'm really empathetic to those younger folks, um, all the folks that spoke tonight about wanting to be able to buy into the community. And I'm a lifelong Marin County resident myself and I have a lot of empathy for that. I just don't have the transparency and understanding if this is really going to be something that teachers, um, and, and firefighters, et cetera, are able to afford. Um, so I think the transparency is really important and I'm also really, um, concerned about the traffic as well. We have two lanes, um, on College, um, to Magnolia Avenue. It's one in each direction. Several other of my neighbors have trouble getting out in the morning. Sometimes my husband has to stop on the street to stop cars so that I can get my kids to school on time. And, um, just, it's going to add to that congestion with these stoplights. I'm concerned about people parking on our street. Um, a lot of people live with multifamilies, um, in their homes. And so I thank you all for, uh, your time and attention. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Hillary. Uh, next comment, please.
Looking for any additional raise hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no further public comment.
Great. Okay, uh, and I bring it back to the chambers. Yes. Did you want to make public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
My name is Darius Farshid. I lived in Loxford last twenty seven years on Hill Chris Avenue, right behind the proposed project. I don't want to echo what the others mentioned, especially the second or third person who spoke, I forgot. Didn't catch his name. Um, uh, I mean, the four, from one story commercial moving to four story, this is really outrageous. And that doesn't blend with the Loxford, uh, planning. But anyway, I don't want to repeat that, but I like to hear from Scott. You, before you open for public, uh, hearing, you mentioned about the liability of city if you deny the project. Could you elaborate on that? On what basis city would be liable?
So, Darty, actually, why don't you finish your comment and we're going to, we're going to come around and, and we'll have some.
Yeah, and that was, I, I like
We'll let Scott speak after you're done. Go ahead.
Because I don't see, I have some legal background. And I don't see any basis for, you know, city being sued. In fact, if it is approved, I bet my money, there is a potential that city be sued for all the violations that come in the future. That's right.
Okay, thank you, Darty. We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll have some time to respond to all these comments. So we'll hold off till we, um, uh, next comment, please, in the chamber. Okay, so, um, why don't we just take a pause? We'll have one more round. I just, um, I, I, I'd like the council members, um, to be able to speak to, you know, any of the comments. I myself noted a few and I'm wondering, Sean, if, if, um, uh, if I could ask staff, uh, three things in particular stood out and you had a very thorough report. And I don't want to rehash everything, but, but I, I think the facts and the evidence are so important here. And so Chad had mentioned, mentioned public safety, Chad Solter. And then Julia had mentioned nine feet. She said, please make nine feet, you know, that'll take care of the height. And, um, and, and then, uh, Mc, Mr. Or Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. McCracken was talking about the parking and the twelve apartments. So parking, safety and height. So parking, safety and height, uh, I know that's, uh, you know, I'm trying to get some clarity because a lot of claims were made. And if you could maybe select from your eleven pages, you know, some of the evidence that you've brought. And I'm looking for any new evidence because that's what we're supposed to be deciding on tonight.
Uh, Mayor Paulson, members of council.
I think your mic is off.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, so is your question whether or not staff has reviewed the safety issues, the height issues and the parking issues?
If you can maybe give us a final assessment, I'm sorry, this turned this thing off. Um, what, what's, what's, just remind us of the staff findings around those three, particularly, you know, there was a claim about nine feet. And I I believe some of that is is already in the, in the, uh, conditional, um, you know, uh, what, what the, what the, uh, applicant has agreed to. And just just to update us on the status and the summary of that, what safety issues there are and what parking issues there are, you know, kind of what what's been identified in the final, final report.
Okay, so so from a purely safety standpoint, uh, the applicant has prepared a traffic report, uh, that their, their consultant prepared and submitted as part of their application. We had David Parisi from Parisi Transportation peer review that traffic report, uh, finding it to be compatible with with the project and with CEQA. So therefore there's no traffic related impacts, there's no traffic, uh, impacts that need to be mitigated. Therefore, it qualifies for that CEQA exemption. Uh, furthermore, uh, the projects reviewed by the Department of Public Works, Department of Public Works has their own uh, standards, regulations when it comes to, uh, you know, turning radiuses, parking, all those types of standards. Uh, and it's compatible and consistent with those policies. On top of all that, again, you have to remember the applicant has submitted this project under the Housing Accountability Act and SB three thirty, which affords them the concessions and waivers uh, to allow them to reduce the parking in effect, uh, through the state guidelines um, and to ask for a waiver for the commercial parking. So there's, there's nothing we can do as staff to say it's underparked. Um, now you could say, uh, from a certain standpoint that it's their project and if they're underparking their own project, uh, that's a marketability thing for them, but eh, from a, from a city standpoint, we can't ask them to have more parking. Um, so, uh, with regard to the heights, um, the staff made a recommendation to reduce the heights, uh, the planning commission uh, echoed that and and conditioned it to bring it down three feet. Um, the applicant did do that. They did make some accommodations. Um, in fact, they've, uh, submitted a, a, a second revision where they've, uh, reduced the retail in the corners uh, by, and that affords another foot in drop. Uh, if you recall, they, they had said that the, uh, the retail plates had to be eleven feet. Um, and that was why the certain sort of standard for that first floor. By reducing that retail, they can drop it down a foot. Um, I believe that's the case. So, so again, they, they're, they're bringing it down to what they think is compatible with their market analysis. Um, so as as far as staff's concerned, that's that's the record for for what we've reviewed.
Are are the ceiling heights ten feet or nine feet?
I believe there are two ten and one nine.
Okay, and what's the height to the parapet?
Um, the last I checked, it was thirty six feet, about just under thirty six feet.
Okay, so so that would be the building height without the mezzanines.
That's correct.
So the building is thirty six feet tall, not fifty four feet tall. It's it's that there are mezzanines on top that go to fi- fifty four feet, but they're set back.
Uh, I believe it's, um, uh, its highest point uh, along the center line of the project, the mezzanine to the top of the mezzanine is forty nine feet.
Okay.
Um, and then I'm, I, I'd have to go back and check, but I believe on the Estelle corner at the highest point because of the topography change, I believe it's, uh, it's the fifty or or fifty one, I think.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, so any other, yeah, I I'm happy to open up council for any deliberation.
Well, I I have a question for for staff. Um, so there, there were a bunch of, uh, comments that were, uh, let's delay this because we don't have the financial information. And if we delay it, we'll have more financial information, be able to make a more educated decision. My understanding is that there is no obligation for us to be provided additional financial information. And then if we delay this, we're not going to get any more financial information. Am I misreading that? Could, I mean, could I get some clarity on that?
I believe we provided you with all the financial analysis that we are legally allowed to command and present to you.
Meaning that delaying it is not going to give us any more financial.
Meaning that we have no legal standing to require any additional information be provided to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Carol.
Uh, Allison, I sent you just a minute ago, two pictures. Did you get them?
Do you want them displayed? It'll take just a minute.
Would you please?
Yeah, maybe we'll come back to that if it takes some time. Um, Councilmember Way or Harold.
Yeah, I just, back to the parking, um, I know part of the Housing Accountability Act removes obligations and requirements of parking, uh, numbers. Uh, can you refresh my memory on the, uh, the statutory limitations on how we can demand or ask for additional parking?
So through the HAA, there is a, there's a section, um, I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, allows them to park the project at reduced rates that the, that the local, uh, guideline or local regulation is. So it's, uh, in like, instead of two spaces per unit, it's one or one and a half or something like that. So that they've applied the residential standards to that part of the project. And then for the commercial component of it, they're asking for a, a parking waiver so that they don't have to park it to commercial standards.
And that meets the statutory requirement for a net amount of parking.
On the residential side, they're, they are meeting the, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean. They're, they are actually meeting the density bonus laws, parking standards for this project on the, for the residential component. They are using a density bonus waiver to reduce the amount of parking for commercial, understanding that this is a single mixed use project and the, uh, commercial parking, if completely met, would require either enough land to preclude the number of units or the construction of vertical parking that would make the project as a whole financially unable to deliver the, the affordable units. So they've, this is, and this is, that component of the analysis is also captured in the, the report from the B C P O, who is the independent economist that the city retained to peer review this.
Okay, I I think that's, your question was very, was one of mine about the financial projections because there's been a lot of public comment about us diving more into their financials. And I, I think it's, um, correct that we don't have the legal right to ask for that, uh, proprietary information. Um, and I think that's important for people to know it's a private business. It's not a publicly held company. If we, um, they don't have to provide us, they have to provide us a certain amount of information, but we don't have any authority to demand more than that. Just like if I had a private business that it was not publicly held, all I provide is what's statutorily required to, to my vendors or to the IRS, so.
Excuse me, let's, let's not talk out of line. You can come up and do public comment again. Um, so, uh, any other council member, uh, did you, with the pictures?
What are the pictures?
I apologize in advance.
Um, but the, the one thing I wanted to add to Catherine, my thought, so I listened closely to Michael Rex's comment and he was asking that we submit pro forma. And I believe that's specifically illegal. We cannot ask for the pro forma. So that's, I, you know, it's not that we cannot ask for anything. It's not that we can't do economic analysis. We have, we've had it peer reviewed. We cannot have the pro forma. Um, okay, so the pictures.
Can you show the other picture first?
Thank you. Only one picture came through.
Oh, okay, this is a similar building up, uh, near Alim Poly State Park. And, um, the picture that didn't come through showed the building as a whole with about six of these roof terraces. And this is the only one that somebody put stuff on. As you can see, they added, it's similar to what's being proposed in this project, the same kind of outdoor roof deck. And you can see somebody's added this frame with the lights and I have no idea what those two objects are in there. And I just, it occurred to me, is there a way that we can regulate what is put on those roof decks? So that, say, something like this doesn't happen.
Uh, I believe you could probably condition it such that there's, uh, nothing projecting over the, the total height. Um, I don't know if there's a, if there's a Larkspur code that prevents people from having adornments or landscaping on a, on an active open space. I mean, that's effectively like saying you can't have chairs on a balcony or a barbecue on a balcony, that kind of a thing.
Yeah, but this is, I mean, this is what I think the neighborhood's worst nightmare is, is that every one of these roofs will have structures like this added to the top of them. And I'm just curious, do we have any regulation of what people can do with that?
Uh, I think, I mean, I agree with Sean that I think that, that we could include a condition of approval to prohibit, um, the owners of units from adding additional structures to the, the balcony areas, um, and, um, that particularly that would exceed the, the total height of the, of the building. Um, other than, and, and we could include, we could also include that the CCNRs reflect that. Um, if there are other aspects of the outdoor space that you wanted regulated, we, we could, you would sort of have to take them one by one. But I certainly think we could prohibit the, the construction of additional structures on those, on those, um, roof decks.
And could we, uh, ban a electronic, uh, amplification of music or other?
That's already going to be covered by the city's noise ordinance.
That's already covered. Okay, good. And then the other point I had, I, um, submitted to, or I asked the city manager and I believe he discussed it with Julian. Um, but in addressing the parking and the safety of the bicycle, one of the things I was proposing was eliminating the center turn lane and expanding the bike lane and, um, and putting it next to the curb with the parking moved out a little bit so that bike riders wouldn't get doored. Is that something we can? Would that be something we have to consider later after the project or is that something that could be conditional on the project?
I know that Mr. Skinner might still be on, but I'll share what he told me, which is that's a significant project that involve all of North Magnolias and analysis beyond the scope of the requirement of the development. So the council wants to take that task on as an analysis of all of North Magnolia, the city could commission that.
Okay, and the point I'm trying to make is we're really thought about this. I've driven around the streets behind there and I have now had at least ten rustic bakery scones at seven to eight o'clock in the morning and have been wandering around the street looking like I was a homeless person, I think in a way, because I kept staring up in the sky. Uh, we have looked at all these issues. We, we have tried. And there are things we can require legally and we can't. And we, we've worked hard on this project, both individually and as a council. That's all.
Okay, so, um, with that, thank you, Councilmember Carol. Yes, please, Councilmember Harold.
Uh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, uh, I, I agree that this, um, project has probably received the level of scrutiny that it's ever going to get. And that a kicking it back to the planning commission might be satisfying. Um, but it's not likely, I don't believe, to be productive. Um, I don't plan to make any motion myself tonight. Um, but I would encourage, um, the council, uh, to, um, to act on this appeal tonight rather than sending it back to the planning commission. Cause I just think that it will just waste time.
Councilmember Candell, uh, sorry, just a, a quick question. Um, uh, Councilmember Harold had a suggestion about, um, making a concession or requirement that the, and you not have a structure on the roof deck. Does that have to be decided and agreed upon, um, by the applicant? Now, before we pass this, I mean, I, I, I'm, if hypothetically we were to pass this, I'm assuming we're done, we can't require anything additionally because we've already given our consent. So, uh, you know, procedurally, how are we, how would we address that if, if we agreed with Councilmember Carol's, uh, desire to put a new requirement on?
Um, if you were, if a majority of you were inclined to add that as a condition of approval, I'm just trying to write something up quickly. Uh, I would, it would be helpful to hear from the applicant that they don't view that as a condition that would, um, make the project infeasible, um, that they're okay with it. Um, but other than that, I think we can, what I would, the normal course and what I would recommend is that if you're, if you're prepared to move forward tonight with an action on the project and the, and the action is to deny the appeal and approve the project, then we could add an additional condition of approval regarding, um, additions of structures to the roof decks here.
Could, could I ask the mayor, uh, if we could hear from the applicant and see if they would object to that additional condition?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'd not, yeah, I, I'm curious if the applicant wants to make public comment at this point. And, uh, commenting on that specific issue would be helpful.
Define structure, I mean.
I, I think, uh, we'll, we'll let the city attorney, you know, uh, the, the city attorney understands, you know, what we're talking about. We don't want a permanent structure. We don't want it to be higher than the.
If you grant us sufficient leeway, we'll make sure that there's as clear a definition as we can of structures in the final condition. Um, but, you know, we've, we've certainly had, um, in with some other projects years later, some, um, some, some, uh, requests by owners for clarification about what constitutes a prohibited structure, but we do the best we can. And basically I'd craft a condition that reflects the intent within, as long as you gave us enough room, we would make sure that it included a definition that we think meets that intent.
Okay. Hey, Seth, give you a starting point for two minutes.
Uh, hi, Mayor Paulson, Council, uh, Tony Craig, Senate Home Resident. I, we'd be happy to do that. Yeah, no structures above a certain height, uh, no hanging net chairs, uh, that'd be fine. Yeah.
Can I have one question? Um, and if we granted you eliminating those commercial units on the ground floor, then the project would be lowered one foot.
So that is correct.
Okay. Would we have to amend?
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that we did in preparing for this was craft a condition, uh, in case council was interested in uh, eliminating the, the two commercial units in buildings A and B. And that the, the, the condition that we've crafted reflects that the, that the, uh, interior, uh, uh, ceiling heights of the you, that basically the square footage of the commercial units would be absorbed into residential units. The first floor of buildings A and B would be reduced by a foot and the overall building height would be reduced to put from the highest point.
And, and this would be more a question for our community development director. Hanging back there behind the monitor, um, or the city manager, if you prefer. Um, we have so many empty commercial units as it is on uh, Magnolia and that area even, um, but overall in the city, there, there's a disturbing amount. Would it make more, does it economically make more sense to approve doing the residential units instead of commercial units as far as tax revenue and you know, just the general economic forecast that we're facing right now.
It's difficult to answer a question in terms of tax revenue because I don't know what types of businesses would occupy those spaces. Um, there's a reasonable probability they won't be high tax generating businesses. It doesn't mean they aren't valuable to the community, whatever they are that occupies the space. Um, you know, it, it may be worth noting those two commercial units were part of very early discussions between the applicant and staff about the city's planning documents anticipating mixed use on the property. And I think it was an effort on the part of the developer at that time to meet staff's desire to, to at least acknowledge those historical documents that had anticipated some sort of mixed use on, on any redevelopment of the property. historical documents that had anticipated some sort of mixed use on, on any redevelopment of the property. Um, so I would assume I, the applicant could tell me if they agree or disagree. That's really at this point why they're still there in the, in the plan was that we, we at your staff for a long time had pushed for them to be there. So if the council now views the value of bringing the buildings down a foot and spreading that square footage into the residential units, I my interpretation is you're, you're mostly saying that's more valuable to you than, than the commercial units. And I think really again, that stems from staff having pushed for that very early in the, in the work with the developer.
Okay, thank you. Great. So um, I, I wanted to kind of uh, move things along here. I left public comment open intentionally. I wanted just to have one last check. Um, you know, we've, we've been here a lot. We've heard a lot of comments, but before I close public comment, uh, anybody in the chamber, any last comments? Uh, if, if you've spoken already, please, uh, we've, we've probably already gotten it. Okay, well, we can do that.
Okay, once again, it's Perry Giacoto, and my concern is the safety in the bike path. And that's why I want you to read what my neighbor wrote and the signatures behind it. That's the most important thing for us. The structure, we're okay with it. We want low income housing. Uh, we do want the parking figured out, so it's not parking everywhere, but the safety and the bike lane. What the city just spent a lot of money redoing that whole roadway, and they did a wonderful job, planning commission. It's a great job, and now we're going to change it and make it less safe. So the safety is the concern that I want you to consider.
Thank you. Great. Thank you for your comment. Um, last call in the chamber here. You've, you've already spoken, sir, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so uh, just a couple of comments for you. I appreciate all your time here tonight and, and throughout this process. You're at the front line of the state laws meeting local laws. And you've got the full support from your entire community to go to bat on this. You've got multiple laws, local laws, that are totally out of control here. For example, the, the height of this development is a hundred percent above what anything is allowed to be built on Magnolia. And so you've just got to decide at what point is it going to be two hundred percent, three hundred percent? Is it going to be the lucky uh, unit here that goes to twenty stories before you choose to fight? You do not need to abdicate your power at a local level. And you've got, you've got the backing of your community to fight this legally and financially. And if you choose not to do this, it's, you, you're going to make it as easy as possible for developers to come in. This is just the beginning. We know it and you know it. This is not the first time you're going to see this coming at you from developers, depending on how easy you make it. And you're making it really easy for the developers right now. The city staff is making it easy. The, the, the planning commission is making it easy, and you're making it easy. And you've got to choose when you're going to fight, and I wouldn't wait until it's a hundred feet or two hundred feet or three hundred foot development before you choose to fight. But now's the time, right now.
Thanks. Thank you for a public comment. Okay, um, last call, anybody in the chamber? Okay, one more time on Zoom, I will okay, um, anybody on Zoom, Allison?
Our next comment will come from Philip Harris.
Hey, welcome, Philip.
Thank you. I live on Francis Avenue, very close to Magnolia. And the aspect of parking that implicates public safety that I don't think has been addressed either this evening, nor in the documents that I've reviewed relates to the um, consultant's belief that the displaced parking will be found on the adjacent streets. I think there are some forty spaces that are uh, being granted a waiver. And living on Francis, walking on Murray, walking around the spell. There simply aren't forty spaces for cars. What there are are children, young children, playing in these streets, even in the rain today, playing ball. And what I envision from a public safety perspective is that these parking, the, these, uh, the lack of parking is going to create a significant public safety issue for our streets, maybe not for that development, but for my neighbors. And I don't believe that's been addressed in any of the comments, nor in the documents about the impact to public safety by allowing for a decrease of some forty spaces of the project. We appreciate some comments about that, or some understanding of how that's being addressed, please. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Philip. Uh, next speaker, Allison.
Speaker is Michelle Sarti.
Welcome, Michelle.
Hi, thank you. And I live on Oak Knoll Road, just a few uh, blocks up from the development. I don't have much to add to this conversation that hasn't already be set, been said. What I would like to ask is that you, city council, you are within your rights to delay your decision tonight. You have five opportunities to, to meet on this. And as a member of the community, I would ask that you give the community time to, to, to work more with the developers on creating a project that the entire community around this development can get behind. Because, and I say this to you developers, we're your neighbors. We're the people surrounding your project, and you're hearing from so many people in this neighborhood tonight that aren't happy about primarily the three things that you flagged, the height, the public safety, and um, the, like, well, I can't remember what the third point was, but you've got a bunch of neighbors around you that aren't happy. And I think it's worth it for us to slow things down and give the community a chance to work with you developers, because we're not saying we want to shut this development down. We're just saying we'd like you to make some more concessions so that this is palatable to everybody. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Uh, next comment.
Looking for any additional raised hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no further public comment.
Great. Okay, so with that, let's close public comment and um, bring it back to the council for one last, I think we've probably delivered as much as we need to. Um, I don't know if Steph has anything, city manager, or uh, and looking around me, I think I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to deny the appeal of the planning commission decision to approve application twenty-one dash fifty-five. A request for conditional use permit, circulation assessment permit, slope use permit, vesting tentative map, state density bonus law waivers, incentives and concessions, design review and sequoia exemptions to modify an existing fifty-two, hundred and thirty square foot commercial building, et cetera. Is that legally enough?
Just to clarify that that includes adoption of resolution twenty dash twenty-three.
So noted and included.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Just, just one point of clarification. Did, um, does the motion uh, need to address what we discussed before about limiting additional?
Just wait, just going to check and see whether or not exactly to that point, do you want to include the condition of approval that you discussed regarding additional structures on the roof deck?
Well, the approval of the CCNRs come later? Or is that included in it?
The CCNRs will, a final appro, final approval of the CCNRs will come later, but if you want to ensure that additional structures on roof decks are prohibited and that those are incorporated into the CCNRs, then I would suggest adding a condition of approval to that tonight.
I would like to add that condition of approval if my second so agrees.
So, so moved. I mean, uh, uh, so the motion, if you can repeat it, please.
So you've, so Councilmember Carol's made the motion, Councilmember Way seconded? Is that right? Did I get that right?
I'm, I mean, I'm confident that what we just heard from the developers that they're going to add that to their.
But, but it's just to clear that you did, I'm sorry, I'm just actually clarified. You did second the initial, okay, so uh, Councilmember Carol, you're proposing to amend the motion to include this condition of approval, Councilmember Way, do you accept the amendment? Okay, so just, I, this is a very quick condition. We will refine it considering with council's intent as expressed tonight, but it will state something along the lines of additional structures on outdoor roof decks are prohibited and the covenants, conditions and restrictions uh, shall reflect this prohibition. Nothing placed on outdoor roof deck shall project above the roof line of the buildings. And we will include a, the final condition will include a definition of structures to try to, try to reflect council's intent.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second with all the clarifications. Allison, can we have a roll call, please?
Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrah?
No.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell?
Yes.
Mayor Paulson?
Yes. Motion passes for one. So I propose we take a recess.
I, I think you're supposed to say another record that the no vote was Councilmember Harrah.
Uh, okay, and the no vote was Councilmember Harrah, and also at this point, we're closing the public hearing and um.
Do you want to give a five minute?
Yeah, and then I'm, I was proposing we take a five minute break. And so we'll return at nine, let's make it seven minutes, nine fifteen. Okay, so welcome back, everybody. We are um, coming back from a, a short break here uh, to business item. Um, the business items, uh, eight point one is amending the fee schedule of the city of Larkspur. So if we could, please get a staff report on that.
If you'll give us one second, Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping that Kathy Arm is in the audience and ready to go, or as a setup as a panelist. There she, here she comes, our administrative services. So um, the fee schedule is what we have up next. And this year, because we're making some modifications that we felt needed, a little extra, and a little extra explanation. We thought it would be good to first bring this as a discussion or business item to prepare you for what and give you a little more free discussion with us about what we're doing. And then um, we'll bring it back for the hearing that's required at your subsequent meeting. Um, I'm going to pass it to Kathy, although the fee schedule touches numerous departments. Kathy is the fee master, if you will, for the city, um, and she has some help, and she'll introduce who supports her in that work. So Kathy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Paulson and council members. Tonight, we welcome back Terry Madison from, he's the principal consultant for ClearSource, who has done our fee schedules now for, I think since night, since two thousand seventeen. Does that sound about right, Terry? Um, and so each year we come back and we need to re-adopt our fees. And Terry has a little presentation for us because we've made some changes this year besides just the CIP.
Thank you so much, Kathy, and thank you, Mayor and members of the city council for allowing me to participate in this topic. I know you've had a very full agenda, so I will walk through the presentation quickly. I'll avoid being long-winded and make time for, for you to provide feedback or ask questions where necessary. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Do you see a presentation?
We do. Thank you, Terry.
Very good. Okay, so by way of agenda, we'll just talk about a background for fee setting in Larkspur. Some fundamentals and terminology that apply to communities throughout the state. And then some findings and recommendations that are specific to Larkspur and a discussion of potential next steps. So, uh, you know, communities are primarily using tax revenues to fund services that provide these broad, general, community-wide benefits. We would think of these as public safety services, public work services, park maintenance type services. And we use mechanisms like fees and charges where we identify a direct receiver of service. So a direct receiver of service, we frequently look to find direct cost recovery. Um, you maintain a fee schedule. It is, it is um, primarily composed of service-based fees. Some form of labor is involved in the fee setting process or the, the, you know, the, the service process. It's either your own in-house labor or contract service support. But what we're thinking about primarily is building fees, entitlement review fees, uh, requests for encroachment into the city right away, those kind of fee-related services. We are not thinking about taxes or assessments or utility rates or what we call development impact fees or mitigation fees. So we're, we're dealing with a limited scope in this topic. In Larkspur, you review these fees each year and you update them just as part of your standard city operation. So you establish a fee schedule typically every March, April or May that will go into effect July one. It corresponds to your fiscal year. And periodically, you do more in-depth studies, typically like every three to five years, you'll do an in-depth study to um, ensure that your fees align to your cost of service. But in between those in-depth studies, you apply just a routine inflationary adjustment. So you're just trying to keep pace with uh, changes in, in your regional costs. So walking into twenty-three, twenty-four, into the upcoming fiscal year that will begin July one, two thousand twenty-three, the fee schedule that we anticipate presenting to council at a public hearing would recommend that most fees in this fee schedule continue to be adjusted by your standard annual inflationary adjustment. But your planning fees would be based on the results of a, of a more comprehensive study that we just recently wrapped up with your new community development team. And there were some uh, minor changes in the engineering world that we like to present to council at the same time. So most items will be an inflationary adjustment, but there are some non-inflationary adjustments proposed. So just uh, by way of reminder, you know, cities throughout the state periodically examine their fees and, and they think about cost recovery. And they do it because we do want to comply with legal requirements that are outlined in the California Constitution and the California Government Code that give us direction for cost recovery and fee-setting procedures. And when we recover our costs of providing um, direct services, it really does help free up our general fund resources that have, you know, many competing priorities for use to be used towards those um, broad, community-wide benefit projects. And then this final bullet point that I think is important is this idea of um, when we recover our cost of providing service, it positions us to continue to be able to meet the service level expectations of the community. Because these are fees, they are approved by the city council at the conclusion of a public hearing, but we do follow our parameters that say, um, before we ask the council to adopt fees, we do want to think about um, the reasonableness of costs and the correlation between the fee proposed and the cost of service calculation. So, so we do think about those items before we present a fee schedule for city council consideration. In the staff report and in my presentation, you may hear reference to comments like uh, full cost of service and cost recovery and subsidy. When we talk about that idea of cost of service, it is frequently referenced as a fully burdened cost. It includes salaries, benefits, um, services and supplies, a share of insurances and uniforms and vehicles that we use um, to provide these outward-facing services to the community. And the idea of cost recovery is linked to the, to how much of the cost of service we recover from the actual fee payer versus what we would pay from our jet, from some other city resource, which would typically be the general fund. So if we have a cost of service of two hundred dollars, but we collect a fee of a hundred dollars, we would say we have fifty percent cost recovery. We recovered a hundred dollars from the receiver of service, but we still had a city cost in total of two hundred. And so the difference would be a subsidy, um, and that would be covered from, from a city resource. So now that, that, everything you just heard is common to municipalities throughout the state. Here are um, what is proposed specifically for Larkspur walking into twenty-three, twenty-four. You're, uh, we'll, we'll start with the inflationary adjustments. That's the majority of your fee schedule. So your existing fee resolution authorizes an annual inflationary adjustment to fees in between cost of service studies that are performed periodically. For this year, most fees are proposed to adjust by five point six percent. That represents the most recent annual change in your regional CPI, so we continue to use the same inflationary metric year after year. the same inflationary metric year after year after year. And so this is just your, um, standard annual practice. For non-inflationary adjustments, so we're asking the city council to consider this year, they're primarily focused around planning fees. I think in a future, your, your staff may come back to you with, uh, more comprehensive examination of different fee categories. But for this year, we, we decided in fee and did the assessment of fixed fee other than deposits for your most common entitlement and permit requests. And so, um, if you look at your current fee schedule for planning fees, there are just many, many layers of deposits. And deposits work wonderfully in the sense of, you know, we can find a very close correlation between service provided and fee paid in a perfect world. But there is a downside to them administratively, um, from, from both an applicant perspective and a city resource perspective. So from an applicant perspective, it's very difficult to get an answer of how much do, should I expect to pay for this service? Um, what we hear frequently in terms of feedback from the fee-paying community is if I can have some more certainty, that's, that's always helpful to me. Um, and so fixed fees for, for services that are relatively homogeneous in nature, you know, six out of ten times, I could assume some level of service, that is the, um, the recommendation in the, in the proposed fee schedule and um, your community development team, your planning team reviewed your, your current fee schedule and had a some recommendations for where we can move to fix fee structures, um, and still feel like, uh, you know, it's a reasonable fee and it can be consistently applied. We do think it would eliminate a lot of time-intensive required management of deposits and that ongoing billing process. And so that's the primary action, um, being recommended. When we move away from deposits and we establish some fixed fees, we can clean up a lot of the fee schedule and just sort of eliminate, um, items that are no longer necessary or relevant. I mentioned, there's also just a couple of changes on the public work side. Um, staff recommends, uh, adopting a fee that would allow the city to recover costs that are associated with monitoring projects that go longer than anticipated. So if we have an applicant come in the door, maybe a utility company or something like that, that says, I anticipate um, being done with work in the right of way on X day and I'll be, the, the road will be repaved by that time. But if something sort of just delays, then as a, as a team, you go out and you conduct field inspections. You make sure the traffic is set up appropriately, all those kinds of things. You monitor the product, the status of the project. It's just a, a mechanism to help the city recover its costs associated with delayed completion of a project. And then occasionally you rec, you receive requests for, um, you know, a longer-term licensing, like an encroachment in the right of way. And you enter into agreements with, with, um, applicants for, for those encroachments. And so just helping you recover the costs of reviewing and entering into those agreements. So next steps for the council would be to determine whether to set a public hearing, um, to, to formally consider these updates. Uh, I think staff's recommending coming back on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. We mentioned that any fee, uh, any new fees you adopt or any increased fees or fee adjustments, you, you typically as a council, complete those at the conclusion of a public hearing. This concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Great. Thank you, Terry. What council, any questions for Terry? Okay.
Comes back in two weeks.
So we'll come back with a, a required hearing, um, but wanted to give you this opportunity if you had any questions. I just wanted to note for the record to some of the council, recall several years ago, we moved public works to fixed fees for the same logic and, uh, I can tell you that the productivity of our analyst who was spending an awful lot of time on the deposits and chasing down the fee amounts has, has gone up significantly because she doesn't have to spend all that time.
Okay, great. Councilmember Carol.
I know this is a difficult question. Trying to phrase it properly. And by adopting what's being recommended in this report, um, how much of an improvement in cost recovery are we looking at? Can you give me a percentage or a, I don't?
I know Terry, he has some thoughts.
I, I do have some general thoughts about it. Um, the idea here, so if you look at your council staff report, there is a fiscal impact of uh, ninety thousand dollars. That really is primarily just the impact of applying an inflationary adjustment. Um, the planning fee adjustments are not intended to enhance your revenue. Um, they're just intended to make it more efficient to administer and complete your direct work. So they're letting planners be planners rather than deposit managers. But the idea of a deposit, what we would anticipate is, is it wouldn't be a lot of enhanced recovery if any, because if we're properly applying a deposit and we would expect this takes about forty hours of staff time. We would set a fixed fee equal to that same forty hours of staff time. So you're just replacing a deposit with a fixed fee. But there are benefits to productivity. And, and we hope applicant satisfaction, you know, some, these secondary benefits to just a fiscal impact.
So I think in other words, we feel that this has a net neutral effect on our costs. Um, it's just sort of shifting things around, creating more stability and more predictability for everyone.
Okay, but my, I guess what I'm trying to get into my brain is then, are we shifting more of the cost of these fees? Less strain on our general budget by adjusting the fees in this way?
I don't know that, I don't know that it's any, a whole lot of less strain. It's just the dollars I, I feel that you're investing in the planning department are going to be better utilized on some of the advanced planning for which there's no cost recovery and less on managing these deposits.
Okay. Right. Any other questions? All right, Terry, thank you so much for your time and, uh, we'll look forward to revisiting this at the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Kathy. Kathy gets to stick around and hear me mumble and ramble for a few minutes.
Thanks, Terry.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all.
Yep, thanks again.
Okay, so I guess I'm up. So where are we putting the? Okay. Thanks. So I have to admit, my presentation is very simple. I wasn't sure how much time would be left this evening. As the council knows, uh, this is a, our first sort of talk about next year's budget. Uh, as the council knows, uh, we have usually a pretty fixed pattern that we've used for the last several years, um, on how we kind of introduced the budget and we've juggled it a little bit to accommodate some of these, uh, time-consuming items that we've had on the council, uh, council agenda. So normally I would have kicked off with the department heads all being here and they would, um, uh, get to celebrate some of their accomplishments and talk about some of their challenges that they're facing. We're still going to do that. We just move that to a different evening, but we thought if there was time tonight, it'd be nice to at least get through. I usually give you that same night with the department heads, I usually give you just sort of a quick summary of what Kathy and I are thinking about, what we're concerned about, um. Begin thinking about time. I didn't layer this up with all the pretty graphs and pie charts that Kathy makes. I promise they'll also come back at a future meeting so you can enjoy them. But I did want to talk about, um, some of the things that Kathy and I already, uh, contemplating and seeing for this year's budget. One, we're excited about is we feel, uh, very comfortable saying that the, we'll bring you a balanced budget. As the council knows, there's been a few years where we've had to bring you a ba, a budget that's out of balance and then work toward the mid-year to, to correct what we saw as a structural issue. Um, a lot of hard work on Kathy's part and all the department heads over the last few years to keep all their non-contractual, uh, personnel costs from growing has allowed us to cure any structural concerns that we have in the current operational budget. So I feel comfortable, we're going to bring you a balanced budget. Um, our analysts are telling us we should start to prepare for slow in sales tax. That doesn't mean a decline. It means, you know, our sales tax has been growing, uh, significantly each year. Yes, sales tax is, is not the largest portion of our revenue base by any means. It's, it's the smaller of our, our big ticket revenue streams, but it's important, uh, and the growth we've seen particularly from our major, um, shopping centers has seen our sales tax grow, uh, when I started here in two thousand ten, I'd have to go double check, but I want to say this was like one point three, one point four million. Um, I mean, this has been a pretty significant jump in sales tax over the years. We think we're going to flatten around three million, given what's going on in the economy. That's what our analysts are telling us to program into the budget. That's where we've been, um, and then where we think we'll land this year. Um, and that is despite the fact we've had some closures of some large, uh, stores. We've also seen a lot of robust sales tax generators come online. We're also seeing good returns in the county pool. The county pool is how we receive, uh, base, base tax of, on internet sales. And so, um, that's been a healthy revenue stream. That is one though, that, uh, our forecasters are telling us to start to expect to slow down a bit. It's partly slowing down a bit because shopping is slowing down, but it, it's also slowing down a bit because rules about how that money is distributed are changing and jurisdiction like Larkspur is going to probably experience, uh, a flattening of that particular pool revenue. But our bread and butter, we're a property tax town. Uh, and the seessor says it's going to keep going. Um, we seem to be insulated with respect to property tax from what the broader national economy is starting to experience. That's typical in Marin. Um, what's not typical are some of the growth figures that we're being told by the assessor to be prepared for. Um, I think Kathy told me that she just saw a revision that's now over ten percent and starting to creep toward eleven percent growth in property tax. Um, that staggers me, but I will remind the council. Kathy, interrupt me by the way, if I've got that wrong.
No, that's correct. It, it's combined, you know, I was like, oh my God.
Um, I want to remind the council, the Marin assessor has an incredible track record of landing within less than one percent, uh, error.
Can I ask, uh, is that because, uh, there's turnover and, you know, the new ones are being valued higher because of?
So, so two things going to rises in property tax. The most obvious one is transfer property and it gets reassessed at today's value. Um, I think one thing that's still contributing to these large increases that we're experiencing is the fact that property that's been held for thirty, forty years is getting reassessed. So that jump is significant. Um, so that's one factor that's playing into this, but also when we see these large-scale remodels of homes, they can trigger reassessments upward and they, those reassessments can be rather substantial. So we in Larkspur know from the activity that I'm sure Elise will tell you all about, uh, when we do have the department heads here, all the permits that her department's been issuing. We know we've got a lot of remodel work going on, um, and it's not little things, it's big ticket stuff. So, um, that's both contributing to what we're observing. And then, um, we probably will see hotel tax, I think about the same. I think we program maybe a little bit of growth there, but, um, you know, we're not, still not back to pre-pandemic. As the council knows, our main, uh, hotel, the courtyard out in the Larkspur landing was one of the chain's highest flyers, uh, before the pandemic. Uh, it's doing well. It's just not back to that kind of business level that it was at before. So those are some of the key assumptions that we're, you know, we're building our budget around. Uh, we do see some challenges. Some of these are in this coming fiscal year. Some of them we're planning for because we see them in the, in our three to five-year planning. Um, Kathy and I try really hard to not just think about the fiscal year we're preparing, but building in the margins that we need so that we can absorb anticipated growth in the following years. So the obvious one is inflation. Um, inflation's hitting us just like it's hitting all, everyone, uh, and the cost of doing business is going up. Um, and it's going up at a time when, um, we're trying to, to get a lot done here in Larkspur. And so, uh, our materials costs, uh, what we're being charged for the things we outsource, the contractors we hire, all going up. Um, I'm quite certain, I've talked to some of the council members and, and just personal chat that you've all hired contractors now and again and been probably sticker shocked to, and I know I have recently by what, what things cost right now and, and that's happening to the city too. Uh, there's pressure on payroll that we took on. We took on that pressure because we realized we were starting to fall behind and having trouble with both, uh, retention of our employees and recruitment of our employees. So we have built that into our payroll. We're prepared to deal with it. But there's other aspects to our payroll we have to be aware of, and that's the cost, we, when we talk payroll, we're also talking about our cost of providing benefits. And so medical costs are still rising and we have to deal with absorbing that increase. Um, and then also, although the council made the, uh, very good, uh, plan to deal with our pension obligation by getting it out of CalPERS hands, putting into a bond with a predictable rate until we could pay it down. We still have to deal with the volatility of CalPERS's investment fund. And in any given year, our one-year contribution that that year's price tag can go up or down. CalPERS has a two-year lag. So Kathy and I have to, when we talk about payroll and pressure on payroll, we have to actually look at where the economy was two years ago to kind of have an anticipation of what's going to happen with a CalPERS bill this year. Then we had to be thinking about what's going to happen in the next two years based on that lag. So what's happening right now hits our payroll in two years. So we have to actually start thinking about that and I don't know if you've looked at your portfolio lately. I've looked at my deferred comp and shed a tear or two. So I suspect CalPERS is doing the same. Um, we have, uh, labor negotiations with both our public safety joint power authorities. So we're probably going to see additional pressure on our costs because their payroll is going to experience increases, I suspect. Um, and you've had both chiefs here, uh, in recent months and you, and some of you sit on those JPA boards, talking to you about how hard it is to recruit right now. Particularly the police, but fire is for the first time, uh, experiencing single-digit applications for openings, which is unheard of in my career. Um, and it's partly a, a sign of interest in those professions. It's partly a sign of opportunities elsewhere. And I, I think, uh, we're still finding ways to try to attract new candidates and hoping some of those will be successful, but we, we do anticipate we're going to experience some increased costs at our JPAs. And then one that's just starting to, to cause me to cringe every time I look at it, um, is that, uh, you know, the, the council knows, the public may not know, we don't buy insurance plans. We don't buy, uh, coverage the way you do in your personal life. We participate with other government entities and what's called an insurance pool. And so we all put money into a pot that serves to cover when we have losses. And so ideally, we don't experience losses and the pool grows. Um, the pool then collectively does buy coverage for big-ticket uh, problems that we might experience, big-ticket losses that we might experience. That's where we're really starting to get hurt. And where we're getting hurt is in jury awards. Jury awards against government have been increasing exponentially. And so, uh, when, that's, that doesn't mean Larkspur's experienced a really ugly jury award, but because we're in the pool, our premium is going up. And quite frankly, if you have a public safety entity, whether you have it directly or in a joint powers authority, if you own property, just like all of you have seen with your property insurance and your fire insurance, um, for us to go get those, those additional coverages for those big-ticket losses so that we recovered if we experienced them. There just doesn't seem to be any relief in that curve. It's almost straight up right now in what those things are costing. So those pool costs are becoming, uh, difficult. Some of the council knows that currently in the president of the pool, so, uh, I've actually told the pool this year's task is to figure out if we can self-insure more of our loss and move it out of the, out of these premiums, because I think it's the only way we're going to bring these costs back down and manage them. Out of these premiums, because I think it's the only way we're going to bring these costs back down and manage them. Whoops, I give you two at once there. So. One of the concerns we have, you know, we don't know yet what it's going to cost. We've given you very rough ideas for what's going to cost to rehabilitate this building. But borrowing costs are not cheap. Like, you know, we've, we've been very fortunate for the last decade, borrowing costs for us have been. You know, money's been so cheap, we'll keep borrowing it almost. That's just not going to be the case anymore. So when we come to you, probably. I think Mr. Skinner and I are hoping that we'll start to have some more refined numbers and projections and options for you late in the next fiscal year, you know. Part of what we'll be having to factor in is how are we going to get the money to then deal with it? And unfortunately, we just have to accept there's probably a higher cost than our projections we've been giving you to date because we haven't factored in that borrowing issue.
Dan, can I just interrupt with a quick question? When you say you're encouraging consideration of of more self insuring. Does that mean that the self insuring? Structure would be within the framework of the pool or will it be the individual municipalities?
Within the framework of the pool, although. On for Larkspur itself. We self insure the initial loss, which you can think of as a deductible. We call it a self insured retention for people who are familiar with that concept. It's easiest to just think of it as our deductible. One thing I think the pool may look at is whether or not we should change some of our retentions are deductible and increase them to bring some of these costs down. That would shift more costs toward Larkspur. So we have to look and see where that makes sense and where it doesn't make sense. We've actually been doing that pretty aggressively in our two public safety authorities because. The nature of the losses they have are very different than we experience in the in the three member agencies of the police authority and in the two member agencies of the fire authority. And so. We think there's some room there to to take on more risk actually within the agencies because. Now let's use fires an example. You, most of your laws in in the fire departments are in a fire authority or our workers comp. They're not. They don't experience a lot of liability loss and what they do is usually something we're going to pay for anyway. So that's an area where maybe we can. Absorb more risk and reduce what we're putting into the pool. Larkspur itself, that may not make sense when we get into the numbers, but then the pool may decide it wants to hold more of the risk. And not necessarily farm some of that risk out to insurers and that's a big decision and analysis I want to go through.
Thank you.
And then. Just one I want you to be aware of. I mean, every city, every government agency has compliance costs with the agency above it, except I guess the federal government. And what's challenging right now, I think. I want this to be taken correctly that I am presenting to you right now as your city manager with his finance hat on, not your city manager with his multi jurisdictional policy hat on. From the city manager finance standpoint. All the laws of states passing to make the world a better place costs a heck of a lot of money. And sometimes people don't realize that. And guess what? The state doesn't pay for stuff anymore. They tell the local jurisdiction, congratulations, we passed this law, but you get to pay for it. My favorite example right now is in the world of waste hauling. Cal recycle has gotten the legislature to pass a number of initiatives. All of them make sense. All of them are are warranted and all of them will clean up our environment. But the way they've structured all those rules is, hey, local jurisdiction, congratulations, you get to deal with this and. The help you get from the state to do compliance is very low. And so our costs are going up there and that's just one example. Each of your department heads could probably fill, you know, half an hour of venting about some of the new costs that they're bearing in each of their operations.
Say the same for the county's expectation.
Yes, we can keep, we, we have a lot of these types of costs and they just keep going up and up. There's always opportunities, though, and this year we've got a really exciting one. For, I don't know, the last six, seven budget cycles, I've had this talk with the council and the public about this concept that we've been just. Holding a lot of cash, lots and lots of cash. And the reason we had to hold a lot of cash is that. The way the bridge project worked is we paid the bills and then we waited to get reimbursed. And so we were constantly floating cash out to that project while the project's done. And we're just waiting. I I think we might still have a reimbursement or two to to come in, but. That need to hold that level of cash is gone. And so it's time to have a conversation about what happens to that cash and and there's a lot of need that we can talk about spreading it across. And there may be a reason to hold some of it or put it into some sort of investment vehicle and park it for a while. We're going to bring you some of these ideas to talk about and discuss. In upcoming meetings and that's pretty exciting. Frankly, it's one of those things you always want to do and you're never able to do because there's just never cash like that. And I have to admit, Kathy probably agree with me when we read the news about banks right now. We're not really thrilled to be holding so much cash at the moment and want to put it somewhere else too. So. Thank you to the community. We're really excited to put measure B and measure G to work. You know, measure B has outperformed our projections by. An unbelievable margin. You know, the council recall, we built our entire model. Around measure B when we passed it, that it was going to bring 1.6 million dollars in. It's been bringing more like 2.4 million dollars in annually. So. As the council knows, we brought you some ideas to spend down the the reserve that had built up in the measure B fund. And we're starting to put that to work, particularly on some storm drain projects and some other needs around the community. That are within measure P's umbrella. But now we want to talk to you about sort of how we're going to program measure B every year and how we think it can work with measure G to really. Achieve some of those goals that we have in our infrastructure program that are compatible with what we promised the voters. So we're really excited about that and Julian Skinner will be here at one of your future meetings in the budget cycle to real to go through some of these ideas. And that is it for sort of giving you the primer of what we're thinking about. I'm happy to chat with you about anything. That comes to mind budget related on the on this sort of. High in the sky view and I promise you Kathy is very close with the ledger that this year will try to print it above four point font so that you can read it. Because I know that's been a challenge in the past. So. With that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. So great high level summary. I know we're going to be revisiting this and I know it's almost 10 and we're tired. So with that preamble, council questions.
I'm just curious. One of the things that came by me at some point. I forget which city budget I was listening to, but I find it very educational to see how we're doing compared to. Our peers. And one thing that struck me was, I guess Fairfax is the only city in the county that's charging a utility tax. And I'm just curious what your thoughts were about it.
Well. We could have an offline discussion, but I think Fairfax is charging almost every tax a municipality can charge. Because over the years they've passed them. I could, I know it's late because I know Mr. Skinner is very well versed in utility tax law and could probably talk to you about. It's history for a while. I'll do a quick summation. It's almost impossible to pass one anymore. And so we don't usually think about utility. So now passes.
It's the same rules as most other taxes under the constitutional provisions added by Prop 218 and amended by Prop 26. If it's a general tax, so it goes in the general fund, it can be used for any purpose. It's a a general tax. Requires a simple majority of voter approval. If it's a special tax and it has restricted uses, then it's a special tax and requires. Two thirds. But yeah, I mean, the. The his, I I won't believe where the history of them, they, most of them that that exist. A lot, a lot of them that exist that exist predate Prop 218, whether they were ever approved by voters is I we'd have to look at the history, but. But it is, it has become difficult to increase them where they exist and even more difficult to get new ones approved where they don't. So it's not something that we look to as the first source of revenue. But it's, it's, it's theoretically an option. And I know that some jurisdictions have looked at some of them, particularly around. Energy and tell mostly around energy related to climate goals and and consider them that way, but. But the willingness of voters to tax themselves to have something additional appear on the utility bill is not high on their priorities in most communities.
Yeah, no, I understand it, but that's what I was thinking is I know. We keep talking about the cost of. The switch over to from natural gas to electricity and the need for all these EV charging stations. So I'm. Trying to anticipate down the road and also at some point. Hopefully after I'm gone, we're going to have to be building some firehouses that meet these new safety standards in addition to our capital costs here. And so I'm just trying to think of. Down the road, it sounds like we're going to be in good shape for the next year or two, but. We are going to be facing some pretty big issues, capital issues coming down the road.
So I didn't actually put the firehouses on the list this year, but they're looming. What we're trying to do on the firehouses is have a cohesive plan with with our partner, Corde Madera. Because all four of our firehouses have issues between our two jurisdictions and we're trying to sort through that. But definitely that's looming as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. So Kathy, thank you so much. To be continued. I I think I have several questions, but I I'll wait till we get to the next meeting.
I saw the vice mayor was handing you the gavel.
Yeah.
Be his way of saying, ask your questions.
That's right. No, I I think this was a great start and and you know, the high level view, sometimes it's better to keep it there and then we'll get into the detail. So with that, I wanted to see if we can move on. Kathy, thank you so much and I'm hoping to hear more. Yeah, I'm sorry. I I did neglect, even though we're tired, any public comment?
Hands from our Zoom audience members. There's no public comment.
Okay, great. So then we'll move on to item eight point three, appointing the Larkspur Citizen of the Year. And I guess I we can just open it up for nominations. Oh, is there a staff report for this?
Each year the council appoints a citizen of the year. The main requirement is that it's a resident of Larkspur. And the main reward is you get to be in the Fourth of July parade.
Okay, all right. So.
It can't be somebody who works here. It has to be a resident.
It it does. And in fact, I know some of the councils over the years have been wanting to recognize a business owner, but oftentimes discovered that owner doesn't reside in Larkspur.
Okay. Okay, council member Way.
So this, when I was mayor in twenty twenty. It was the hundredth anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, which gave women. The women fought for the right to vote and we were going to have a big suffragist parade. During this Fourth of July parade and I had organized all that and I even had rented a float so that a lot of our senior women could ride on the float. And I think Kathy Hartzell, who was an ex council member, was going to ride a horse like some of them did in the suffragists parade, but we all know what happened in twenty twenty. So there was no parade. But using that same theme, I appreciate some of the fine women who have served in this role, that I am the only woman who serves in this role now. And one has been a stalwart supporter of Larkspur for many, many years. And for that purpose, I would like to nominate. Esteemed Joan Lundstrom to be our citizen of the year. For the following reasons, she served on this city council on this dais for twenty eight years, the longest serving. Woman to hold this role. She was also Larkspur's first female council member in nineteen seventy one. She was first elected. And the city's first female mayor. She even spoke tonight to at at our birthday party for the city hall. So she's still an engaged participant in our public process. When she was on in this role that we all have now, she was very instrumental in preserving public open space and in getting public trails. And I think on her docket was the King Mountain Preserve and the present preservation of the open space above town. She also served on multiple committees within the county structure. I don't even know all of them like we all do, but she. Was very representative of Larkspur's role in the greater part of the county. So for that reason and for her long time commitment to Larkspur. Including her current role on the Larkspur Community Foundation and their fundamental role of supporting the nonprofits and the community that I would like to nominate her.
I'd like to second that.
Second that nomination.
Great. So we have a nomination and a second. I'd also like to add, I Joan has been an inspiration, a mentor. I'm very pleased. And with that, maybe we just need a roll call. Is that how it works here?
Your own person, you could just take a vote. You don't need a roll call.
All right. Why don't we do a roll call? I'm too tired.
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrah.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Candell.
Yes.
Mayor Paulson.
Yes. Thank you. Any last closing comments?
It is man of three. Before you, Jordan, I have, I have to share that the meeting's not over, but the public comments that were submitted and writing during the meeting have been sent to you by email and are posted on the website. I want to acknowledge the city clerk doing that during everything else he's doing during the meeting.
Allison and posting pictures that are our council members since. What more can we throw at you, Allison? Thank you so much. So with that, we're adjourning and we will come back, I believe, on Monday. So we'll see you soon. Good night, everybody.